Okay, call to me in the order. This is the regular meeting for our Beach City Council for Tuesday, September 13th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Mr. Rosansky, please.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the light of Hurricane Katrina, it is appropriate for us to ask God's help tonight, not only for our own city government, but also for the victims of the hurricane and all the government and civilian workers who are now working so hard to help the survivors. Let us pray. God of all peoples and nations, we invoke your guidance and your help for the task of governing our city, for Mayor Heffernan and the city council, our city staff, and the citizens gathered here tonight to work together for the true welfare of all your people. May they be vigilant in their concern for the basic requirements of human dignity and work diligently to help our city to be prepared for whatever natural or human disasters may come our way. We pray for all the communities affected by Hurricane Katrina and for their leaders. Help them to shelter the homeless and rescue those still stranded by the devastation. We ask you especially to protect the children and the elderly from harm, reunite their families, and open the hearts of our great nation to help them rebuild their lives. We ask this trusting in your goodness and your everlasting love for us. Amen.
Thank you, Father Carey. Father Carey is a pastor, Lady Queen of Angels. I have missed two steps. Can we have a closed session report from the city attorney?
There is nothing to report from closed session.
Now, we'll really go backwards. Can we have roll call?
The record will show that all members are present.
All right, now we'll try to keep on a better pace. Okay. The first order of business presentations, I'm going to be presenting plaques tonight to outgoing members of boards and commissions. Ed Selich, Val Skorle, Kathy Harrison, and Roy Engelbreit. Will you please come down and down to the table down there? Great. I think I'll use this mic. I want to thank you for all your hard work. You know, I ended up on the city council because I couldn't get on the planning commission, so sometimes this works in reverse order, and there's a lot of hard work that's done that's not on TV. That's a lot of time that is spent, you know, at these commission hearings, board meetings, and we thank you all for your time. It's not a very visible job all the time, but you aid the fabric of our city. You aid the government. Your contributing has made our city better. Thank you.
(applause)
Commission.
Committee, commission.
You want to say anything?
Well, I just want to thank you for all the support you've given to the Arts Commission over the years. It's really grown a lot in the last eight years, and you've brought a lot to the citizens of Newport Beach because of that, so, thank you.
I'd like to thank the staff of the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation. They do a tremendous job. The general services folks, they worry about 40,000 trees in the city, which is a chore in itself. The people under Marine Knight in the senior services and the recreation programs, there's literally thousands of people that are involved in the programs, and the programs are 70% self-supporting, which is amazing in itself. So, they're to be commended for the hard work, and we have a wonderful staff, and we're lucky to be here in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor.
Yes.[268.22][268.22](applause) I've spent many, many hours in meetings with some of these commissioners and Val Skorle in particular related to parks design issues, and he has really put his soul into getting a number of the parks underway in the city as well as those that we still have on the books going. Kathy Harrison has done just a phenomenal job with the Arts Commission, and I think one of the items is the concerts in the park that she was particularly interested in, and has done, just spent many, many hours. And so, we really appreciate the volunteer time that has gone into your experience, and thank you for giving us. I think both of you had at least eight years, didn't you? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I too would voice those same comments, and just to the public in general, we run as a city by either committee or commissions, and these people exemplify those commissions. And the amount of hours that they have all put in, each and every one of them through the years, Ed's a long-termer, I think he's like 10 years or something, but, and they spend their time here at City Hall, and it's all volunteer. There is no pay to this, but we do encourage the citizens of this community to make application for these positions, give of your time. These people gave tirelessly and unselfishly for, in Kathy and Val's case, eight years, and we really do appreciate it. I don't think the citizens really would know how indebted we are as a city council and how indebted they should be as citizens to these members who give up their time.
Thank you again. Because I don't think residents in this town know the amount of detail it takes to get anything done. When you talk about developing a park, talk about concerts in the park, talk about Arts Commission, whatever it takes, there's lots of detail before you see the event, or see the piece of art, or see the outgrowth, and that's what these folks take care of, and it's not simple. And it's done by committee, which means it's not, you're not by dictator, you have to have consensus, it takes a long amount of time. Thank you again. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Selich. Yes.
I just have one question. I got my five-year pin this last June, which was five years late, so am I going to have to wait another five years for my 10-year pin? Just a question.
See the city clerk.
Duly noted.
Okay, we have a proclamation, two proclamations tonight. The first is for Bill Lusk. See, he's here. Would you come up, please?
Good evening.
Good, I'm going to read this if I could.
Okay.
This is William D. Lusk. He is a 40-year resident of Newport Beach. Bill Lusk and his family, business, the Lusk Company, have built more than 3,500 homes across Orange County and in Newport Beach. Bill Lusk has served our community in many capacities, as a member of the Newport Beach Traffic Advisory Committee, president of Newport Harbor Area Chamber of Commerce, skipper of the Commodores Club, and director of Hope Hospitals 552 Club. Bill Lusk was named Newport Beach Citizen of the Year in 1984. Bill Lusk and his father created the Lusk Center for Real Estate Development at USC, which is quite famous, and also the Lusk Research Campus at Scripps Clinic in Torrey Pines. Therefore, as the mayor of Newport Beach and on behalf of the entire city council, we hereby recognize the community services selflessly offered by William D. Lusk, and hereby honor and commend him for his service work on behalf of the people of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.[504.12][504.12](applause)
Want to say anything?
Yes.
Oh, I am a developer, not having anything to say.[513.12][513.12](laughter) You know, you make my family and I very proud. And, you know, as a developer builder, we can go up and we can make all the, we move a little dirt and we build some pretty houses, but the real character of our city comes out of the people. And those are the people that maybe settled here prior to the incorporation of the city, and those people who formed the city. And so, I give them credit as a majority of this award, and I want to honor them now. But, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you very much, I appreciate this.
Thank you.
Bill Lusk.[552.29][552.29](applause) I just want to say congratulations to Bill, and years ago when this city was kind of a, and actually, it's not that long ago, it's in the '60s, but we were actually fairly undeveloped, but there were a group of citizens that came together with a vision for Newport Beach, and Bill was part of that, and I think, I thank him personally and congratulating for the vision that we currently have here. It's a great city. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Okay, our second proclamation will be for the Race for Cure Day. Race for Cure is coming up on Sunday, September 25th, be conducted in Newport Center, as it has been the past, very famous event for us in the city. Let me read this proclamation. Do we have somebody receiving it? On behalf of the cancer center? No, then I'll just read this, please. Indulge me. Breast cancer is the leading cause of cancer death of women between the ages of 40 and 49. The leading cancer site among American women is second only to lung cancer and cancer death. The incidence of breast cancer in Orange County is higher than the state incidence. The 14th Annual Race for the Cure will occur on Sunday, September 25th, in Newport Beach, in Newport Center, raising awareness of breast cancer, raising funds for breast cancer outreach and screening in Orange County. 75% of the race proceeds will be directed toward breast cancer outreach and screening in Orange County, while the balance of the proceeds will support nationwide breast cancer research. On the day of the race, the Susan G. Coleman Breast Cancer Foundation will honor those individuals in Orange County and across the nation who have survived breast cancer and who have advanced the goals of the Coleman Foundation. A public purpose meeting, excuse me, a public purpose in meeting our community's health and education needs will be served by the community and its employees assisting and participating in the Race for the Cure event and associated activities of the Susan G. Coleman Breast Cancer Foundation. Therefore, as the mayor and on behalf of the entire city council, we hereby proclaim September 25th as Race for the Cure Day in Newport Beach. Thank you. Okay, city clerk, safeguard this. Okay, we have cultural arts grant presentation. Mr. Rockefeller.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As you know, I'm Kerwin Rockefeller. I'm the chairman of the Newport Beach Arts Commission, and we're here tonight to present our fiscal year 2006 cultural arts grants. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge my fellow commissioners, past and present, and ask them to stand just for a moment so we can have further recognition of them. Wendy Brooks, Bill Lasky, Carol Starcovich, and previous commissioners Kathy Harrison and Kathy Michaels, if they could stand as well. Thank you. Jerry Allison and Robin Grant and Arlen Kartosian are not able to be with us tonight. Thank you.[747.44][747.44](applause) You should have already received in your, uh, oh, you should have already received in your city council staff reports our fiscal year 2005 annual report and our fiscal year 2006 preview. As a little bit of a reminder, I'd like to remind you that this coming Sunday, we will have the last, the fourth and last in our Summer Concerts in the Park series, 5:00, Bob Henry Park, Moonlight Express, which will be big band 1940 swing music. This year, the Arts Commission received written grant proposals from 15 nonprofit organizations. After careful deliberation, the Arts Commission is pleased to be awarding 14 organizations a total of $40,000. This $40,000 represents the maximum amount of funds forwarded by city council to the Arts Commission under city council policy I-10. We are very grateful to the city council for recognizing the importance of arts and culture in the city of Newport Beach. Our grantees tonight will ensure continued quality cultural education programs for students in all elementary, middle, and secondary schools, as well as families, residents, and visitors to the city of Newport Beach. Before I invite Mayor Heffernan to join me here at the podium to present the checks, I'd like to ask representatives of the awardees to please come forward. Please welcome representatives from Ballet Pacifica, Baroque Music Festival, and please, you can line up here to my right, Ballet Pacifica, Baroque Music Festival, Bowers Museum, Festival Ballet Theater, Laguna Playhouse, Newport Beach Film Festival, Orange County Museum of Art, Orange County Specific Symphony, Philharmonic Society of Orange County, South Coast Repertory, Southland Opera, Stella Dance Company, and Stop Gap. Mayor Heffernan. Ballet Pacifica. Thank you very much. Baroque Music Festival. Bowers Museum. Festival Ballet Theater. Laguna Playhouse. Newport Beach Film Festival. Orange County Museum of Art. Orange County Specific Symphony. Philharmonic Society of Orange County. South Coast Repertory Theater. Southland Opera. Stella Dance Company. And Stop Gap. Mayor Heffernan, would you like to say any comments?
I'm on the spot.[928.12][928.12](laughter) But, the fact is, we have all these recipients, you've screened them, and the fact is, you do all the hard work to bring art to our community. That benefits all of us. You know, it can be a pretty sterile place but for your efforts, and I want to thank you all. Great.[943.73][943.73](applause)
We'll do a photograph, please. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to remind you, this is the best of the best of culture and arts in Newport Beach. Thank you.[955.23][955.23](applause) Outside? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kerwin. We have one more presentation tonight. Do we have someone here to receive it? Or someone here to give it?
Yes, I don't see Johnson.
Well, I think we should wait until John's here. Huh? Oh, well, then, we need to delay it until next.
Okay, we're going to pass on that last item. Okay, city clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card for those wishing to address the council. The card is used to assist in the preparation of the minutes, and the completion of it is optional. Completed cards should be placed in the box at the podium. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, you're already warmed up, Mr. Selich.
I have nothing.
Mr. Rosansky.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Webb.
Okay, I'll take their time.
Go ahead.
The September 1st of 1906 was when the city became the fifth city incorporated in Orange County. So, last September 1st, we became 99 years old. We now have 352 days until our 100th birthday, and this is our centennial celebration this year. And so, I thought that I would remind people of this, and I may periodically put a numbers up here so you can see how many days we have until our 100th anniversary, our 100th birthday, but we have lots of events coming up. The Let's Do Lunch is coming up on Sunday, October 2nd, in which it's a family day with featuring the Beach Boys, and a lot of games and activities which I think all will have fun. But, I'm going to give you a centennial moment. September 3rd, 1906, was the first Board of Trustees meeting for the city council, or they were called for the city. They met on the Newport Pier at the S.P. Railroad Station, and they elected John King as the president of the Board of Trustees. They discussed where there would be a city hall. The old schoolhouse was offered for $385 per year. However, they were able to get a storefront on 15th Street for free until May 1st, and thereafter, it was going to cost $25 a month. The pavilion was picked as one of the places to publish official notices, and the clerk's salary was set at $15 a month. The second meeting held on September 11th, 1906, they got into a number of items, however, there are two correspondence items, and there was a letter from the WCTU urging no issuance of liquor licenses, and an application from Jay Wilkinson for a liquor license. Those were both tables, and it came up later. And also, they adopted ordinance number four, which had to do with dog licenses. So, that's your centennial moment for tonight.
We'll be looking for many more, I can tell.[1162.58][1162.58](laughter) Hopefully, once a meeting, maybe we'll. Mr. Ridgeway.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Daigle.
Yes, tomorrow is the conference on women. Our keynote speaker is Libby Pataki, who is the First Lady of New York, and she's going to offer her perspective on women's issues. It's being held at the Delbo Bay Club, and want to thank the Bay Club for their hospitality. Our speakers are over there now practicing. The room accommodates 400 people, so they're getting used to that. And if you want to register, probably the best thing to do would be to show up tomorrow at 8:30, so looking forward to it. City of Newport Beach is one of the sponsors, Hoag Memorial Hospital, Presbyterian, Singular Wireless, Spa Gregory's, Traditional Dury are all sponsors. So, really appreciate all the women and all of the people that have been so involved with organizing this event. And then also, on Sunday, went to the Pacific Triathlon at Crystal Cove, and firefighters across the nation participated, and Dave Kiff, our assistant city manager, won the Clydesdale Division. And in athletic circles, Pacific Triathlon is known as a strong man's course. And our local resident, Bob Kyler, is the driving force behind this event, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Daigle, for all your work on the women's conference for tomorrow. Thank you. Mr. Nichols.
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing? I have nothing. Mr. Bloudal?
Would you allow me to make a brief announcement? I promised some people I would. It was about two years ago when the city council officially adopted what is known as the First Battalion, First Marine Regiment, and First Marine Division at Camp Pendleton. And last year about this time, we had our first mess night. We are going to recreate that event again this year. It's going to be Thursday, the 29th of September. There's limited seating, advanced reservations are required. The number to call for tickets and information is 949-644-3202. People around town are going to see probably a smaller version of this poster advertising the event. But last year, it was a great event. We had about 150 Marines there. They all left thinking Newport Beach is the greatest city in the world. We keep hearing that over and over from the last year. They're really looking forward to it, and a ticket of $225 will allow you to come and also to support a Marine so that they don't have to pay. So, we look forward to getting the word out and showing the support of Newport Beach for our Marines. Thank you.
I can add a personal note. For not knowing what I was walking into that night, it was probably one of the most memorable things I've done in the last 10 years. It's something you should not miss, and it's also a way for the residents of Newport Beach to show active monetary support for Marines. This is the First Battalion, First Marines. They've been to Iraq once, they're going back. This is a mess night, which precedes them going back again, and this time, they're going, as I understand from their, they're going to Fallujah, which is a hotspot. So, and this is life and death stuff. They came back without any fatalities the last time, but the battalion that they relieved the last time lost more than a few. And so, this is real life and time stuff. If you want to experience one of the most patriotic nights, you're going to experience around a wonderful group of enlisted men, Marines, that are fighting for all of us, you should come. You know, you will not be go-away disappointed. This is a wonderful evening. It's a wonderful way for our city to be able to show active support, not just pat them on the back, but active support for the people that are doing the work defending our country. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just one more thing. That is, it is a formal event, and any money that is raised in excess of the expenses will go to support the families whenever the troops are deployed.
Yes, and you'll have opportunity to, you know, there are fines. I mean, it's a very intricate, tradition-filled event, and it goes on for a fair amount of time, but you will not be disappointed. And beyond just the money paid for the table, there's money raised for fines, and there's opportunities to really put some cash where it counts for these Marines, you know, that are going over, not just the ones that are leaving, but for their families that are staying. We're talking privates and corporals that are not making very much money at all. Thank you. City clerk.
Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 10 and supplemental item 19, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Mr. Selich, we're going to start with you again.
I have nothing to pull.
Mr. Rosansky.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Webb.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Daigle.
Yes, number seven, please.
Okay. Mr. Nichols.
I am going to pull a couple. Number eight, I'd like to see a discussion of what's going on back there, and overall, where our costs are. And I want to register dissent on four, five, and six, so I'm not exactly sure how I can do besides pulling it, but I think this is satisfactory.
City attorney, you want to rule on that?
He can register that at the time of the motion.
You could vote on those separately.
We'll vote on those separately, then, rather than as consent. So, in summation, we have, we're pulling seven and eight, and we'll, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to continue item number seven, request that be continued because I think in conversations with Councilwoman Daigle, we still have a little more work to do, and we'll come back at the next meeting with some more information on that end.
Okay.
If we're going to vote separately on four, five, and six, does that mean we need to pull them?
No, but I think it can be part of the consent calendar.
But we'll just vote separately on them.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to abstain on item number one, and I will do that after the motion.
You wouldn't need to, you don't really need to vote separately on each one of them. When you vote, you can register either an abstention or an objection to.
All right, all right, other than the, all right, so we'll get this, we're going to continue seven, we're going to pull number eight, and then we're going to vote on the rest of them. Is that right? Does this work? Can we have a motion that affects?
Okay, I move affirmative action on the consent calendar items 1 through 10. We're pulling item eight, and continuing item seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask if anybody from the public.
Oh, no, no, I'm not. I just want to make sure we'll tee it up with that motion. I'll second the motion.
You're, just like I'm going to do when we call for the vote, I'll.
Okay, now, if we're, all right, if we're clear on that, we're clear on the motion at this point, open to the public.
Jim Hiller, Newport Beach. I'd like to pull item number one, and there's also steady session agenda SS2, which is out there.
I'm not exactly sure how I can do besides pulling it, but I think this is satisfactory.
City Attorney, you wanna rule on that?
He can register that at the time of the motion.
You could vote on those separately.
We'll vote on those separately, then, rather than as consent. So, in summation, we have, we're pulling seven and eight? And we'll, and we'll pull, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to continue item number seven. Request that be continued because I think in conversations with Councilwoman Daigle, we still have a little more work to do. And we'll come back at the next meeting with some more information on that end.
Okay.
If we're gonna vote separately on four, five, and six, does that mean we need to pull 'em?
No. But I think it can be part of the consent calendar.
But we'll just vote separately on them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna abstain on item number one, and I will do that after the motion.
You wouldn't need to, you don't really need to vote separately on each one of them. When you vote, you can register either an abstention or a objection to...
All right. All right, other than the, all right, so we'll get this through. We're gonna continue seven. We're gonna pull number eight. And then, we're gonna vote on the rest of them. Is that right? Just so we're clear, do we have a motion that affects?
Okay, I move affirmative action on the consent calendar items 1 through 10. We're pulling item eight and continuing item seven.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to ask if anybody from the public...
Oh, no, no, I'm not. I just wanna make sure we'll tee it up with that motion.
I'll second the motion.
You're, just like I'm gonna do when we call for the vote. I'll...
Okay. Okay. Now, if we're, all right, if we're clear on that, we're clear on the motion at this point, open to the public.
I'd like to pull item number one. And there's also steady session agenda SS2, which is out there. So, I don't understand the reason why that wasn't pulled up. So, I'd like to discuss that one. So, and what you're presenting to four, five, and six has to be pulled up. Thank you.
So, what do we have? We have number ones been pulled?
And one and eight have been pulled.
Okay.
And seven, continue.
All right, let's go ahead.
One more request. On item number nine, it would just be a requested part of the motion to change, there's six action items. Action item number four authorizes the city manager to enter into a contractual reimbursement agreement with two of the property owners. One of the property owners, we're still working on clarifying some of the language and so that he feels comfortable with it. So, the actual agreement that's attached to the staff report, we would request with authority for the city attorney to approve any nonsense, any changes that would not impair the city's interest or liability interest with regards to the agreement.
You wanna add that as part of the approval?
Yes, if you could add that as part of the approval, to give some authorization for the city manager to sign that agreement, but also give us some flexibility to make some language changes.
City Clerk, are you clear on that? A little, so the record will be straight. Okay.
Now, this is the reimbursement by the, those two property owners for some of the work that we're going to be doing for them while we put this in. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. City Clerk, how do we vote here? So, you have a clear record.
Well, I believe Mr. Ridgeway said he was going to abstain on item number one. Councilmember Nichols was going to vote no on four, five, and six. It just needed to make those announcements, and then we can go ahead and vote.
Okay, with those announcements, let's vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, City Clerk?
Item number 11, comprehensive sign code update and sign design guidelines manual.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to take a crack at this one because we've had two recent meetings where lengthy discussions were involved in going through the proposals as far as the sign ordinance. And there has been one additional item that has been brought forward to staff. An item that would further reduce the letter heights on building signs if those buildings are close to the street. Councilman Salich brought that to our attention. And it is included in an additional short section in the design guidelines. The staff, also in the staff report, addressed...
Let's stop right there. Mr. Ridgeway, you have a question on that?
I just, what does it read? How close is the building, and what is the height of the letter?
Judge, can you come forward here with that?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. George Berger, City Staff. Since it's a, since the proposal would be, one of the elements or one of the sections in the, in the design guidelines, which are not codified into the zoning ordinance, there's a little bit more flexibility there. And the city manager is passing along to you a copy of the new section that we've added into the design guidelines, which we'll be voting on at the, at the next meeting. But for the purposes of making it clear, let me read it. It's just a couple of sentences. Reading the overall size of a building-mounted sign and the height of its lettering should relate to the distance the sign is from the street and its ability to be seen clearly. Signs close to the street are more visible and therefore should use a smaller letter size than signs that are set back from the street. Sign users should keep in mind that the purpose of a sign is not to overwhelm the reader by sheer size, but to convey its message efficiently. Again, it's so flexible that it's very difficult to put anything into code language that would really work extremely well in all circumstances. It's much better to make it easier for the public and the staff to work together and reduce the size or enlarge the size up to the maximum that's in the code.
George, the only, let's make one comment. Signs right now are maximum 36 inches.
That's correct.
So, we're working from that being the maximum, and this...
By reducing it from that.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I would probably add one sentence that would say, and in no case shall it be less than 18 inches. I think you could force a smaller sign, and I can't imagine anybody wanting less than 18 inches. That's just a general comment. I, Mr. Salich probably understands that comment.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that keeps you guys, so you're working within a framework.
That'd be fine. We could add that to the design guidelines the next time.
Okay.
George, it's here at the microphone. Do you want to talk about the six items that previously were brought up? I mean, they're, they're in the staff report. And if council doesn't have any other, any questions about them, then we will take it that you understand them and that they were addressed satisfactorily as far as your concerns.
Certainly, I'd be more than happy to take any questions myself or Ron Flugrath, our consultant, or Kathy Walcott, the staff attorney who's been working on this project as well.
Mr. Salich?
Yeah, I don't have any, any additional concerns or questions. I just think that we've done a really excellent job on this, on the sign ordinance. And I think it's gonna go a long way to giving us a better quality of signs. We've had a lot of input from different aspects of the community. And I, I've been involved in sign ordinances before, and I can tell you, they can get real ugly. And so far, at the hearings, you know, we've had some people from the committees come in and support what we're doing and have not had any objections from the public for those being regulated by the signs. So, I think we've done a good job on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would echo again what Mr. Salich said. I would make a motion for approval. I know that seems extraordinary, but we've heard this out so many times. With the changes that were suggested earlier by George and with the additional language, that would be my motion.
I'll second that.
All right. Any other council questions for staff? Mr. Nichols?
I'm still of the question, I, I don't see what we got wrong with what we're doing, but maybe that's, if somebody could sorta in general say why we spent the time on this, I'd like to hear it.
I think in general, the easiest way to answer it is that the sign ordinance that we've been operating under for the last 25 or so years was developed as a framework for signs when, when things were different in town or around town. Signs were a lot more garish, a lot more punchy. In a way, you have a lot of technology changes that have been brought about in the last 15 or 20 years particularly, that as the communities changed, sign manufacturing and sign technologies have changed as well. Further, one of the things that has been a significant concern for the community is that as the city of Newport Beach has become more sophisticated in general, a lot of the people who live here and work here want signage that reflects that. There's what is perceived to be a fair amount of sign clutter around the city. Not necessarily big or small, just a lot of different signs in a lot of different ways. And so, the community, as represented by the committee that was working with us, all the people who were at, a lot of the people who were at the public workshops, and ultimately, the planning commission and the city council felt like it was time to bring the sign code up into the 21st century as well as the rest of the zoning code has been.
City Attorney?
I might...
Excuse me. Mr. Nichols, do you have any?
Thank you, I just...
That's fine. Good.
I might just add to that, that it also is about as constitutional a sign code as is possible. And over the 25 years, there's been a lot of court opinions, Supreme Court opinions, and local court, California court opinions that have impacted signs and how they're regulated. And so, we needed to address those as well.
Good.
Also, I might ask that if the motion is to move the recommended action, that way we get the ordinance introduced.
I thought, yeah, I was, I'm moving recommended action with the changes that were noted earlier.
Okay. All right, City Clerk, are we clear on the motion? Total stand-up? Good. Any other city council comment? Okay, it's open to the public. All right, we're gonna close the public comment, bring it back to the city council. No other comment, let's vote.
With Councilmember Nichols abstaining, the motion carries.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, non-agenda public comment?
Jim Hildreth, Newport Beach. The question I have, which I've had for numerous years, is exactly how to access a location at the southwest end of the Grand Canal. I present it to verbally, to the city manager's office, exactly how to access this location, which is part of the city of Newport Beach, their sphere of influence. The Grand Canal is under the domain of the city of Newport Beach. The outer locations is under the sphere of influence of the county vis-à-vis onshore and offshore moorings. The city has been well aware that the Grand Canal has access structures in it and has moorings in the Grand Canal, on the Grand Canal. And to access the moorings in the Grand Canal, access structure's been allowed. So, the city has actually acknowledged a access deficiency, the southwest end of the Grand Canal, by the construction of a ladder, which when Webb was the city, well, public works director, acknowledges that a ladder was put in under, I don't know if it was under his direction, but considering he was head of the department, then it must have been under his direction. And it should be held accountable even back then. The access for the location, it says for public access, the reason why they removed a structure was called platform and steps, which is shown to be a adequate location or adequate structure for the location. So, the city has actually acknowledged a willingness to have a access structure at the location. Granted, they have come to realize that public access also includes person that is in a wheelchair. And it must have been a fluke, or maybe a lie, as to the willingness to have public access at that location. Or maybe misrepresentation as to the reason why they're allowing to have public access at that location. However, still, access to a location that the city has been collecting revenue for cannot be denied. I'll find the laws for that, but it cannot be denied. Common sense. Thank you. I see the red light flash. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, non-agenda item? I'll close that. City Clerk?
Oral reports from city council on committee activities.
We're gonna start with the general plan update, and Mr. Salich?
There hasn't been a meeting of the general plan update committee, but I will tell the rest of the council that as the chairman of the committee, I have been meeting with the staff. And we just met last week and formulated the alternatives that are gonna be included in the EIR in addition to the land use alternatives that were selected by the city council and the planning commission last month. And once we make the decisions later in the meeting regarding some of the traffic assumptions, then we'll be ready to start running the traffic models. And then, the next thing that we can look forward to, I believe, is in October, that the staff will be bringing up before the planning commission and the city council discussions on policy issues involving various elements of the, of the general plan.
Good. Thank you. Local coastal plan?
Thank you. We are actually scheduled for a hearing in October. I don't know the exact date. Do you, anyhow, we're scheduled for a hearing on the, the land use element of the local coastal plan. And assuming that that were passed, and I think that's a big assumption, but then we still have the implementation plan to submit that basically is the underlying statutes that support the land use plan. So, we're anxious to get to that meeting, and we'll report next month.
Mr. Mayor, I think that meeting is the 12th through the 14th, so we haven't seen the agenda, and we don't know exactly what day our agenda item is going to fall.
And what city is that?
San Diego.
San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you both. I'll deal with Newport Coast. We met last night. We meet bi-monthly, and we dealt with a host of issues. Once, we had a, we had a crime report about what sort of crime statistics we have up on Newport Coast. Open space goals, which deals with the, how the Newport Ridge Park will be dealt with, what part will remain in the association, what part may morph into a city-controlled asset, which has to do with the third issue, and that is the community center, which is, design is underway. And they are in plan check, as I understand it. Then, we dealt with assessment district review, assessment district review. That is how the $175 million roughly that the folks up there have those bonds outstanding, how that money was spent by the county. And there's no conclusion yet as to how it was done. And as part of the annexation agreement, the city is undertaking that investigation for the Newport Coast residents. And our next meeting is scheduled for November 7th, Newport Coast Elementary at 5:30. Okay? Mariners Joint Use Library. Mr. Webb?
Nothing new on that one, we haven't met, but the library is progressing very well. And we hope to, I mean, we do not see any delays and hope that it's gonna be finished shortly after the 1st of the year.
Okay. City Centennial. Mr. Webb?
The Centennial Committee met the 1st of September and are meeting again on the 15th. We're putting the finishing touches on our first event, which is Let's Do Launch. It's at the Dunes, October 2nd. Tickets are $15. You can buy it online at www.nuitportbeach100.com, or call our Parks and Recreation Department and get your tickets. And I think that anybody that comes will have a fun time and bring your family. It's gonna be, it's $15 a ticket, which should be within the budget of everybody.
Good. Thank you. Marina Park Planning?
Marina Park Planning, our next committee meeting is going to be on September 20th, that's Tuesday, at 4 o'clock here in the city council chambers. And we'll be discussing recommendations from the subcommittees on goals for evaluating the various different proposals and looking at a needs assessment related to recreational issues as well as, I don't remember what the other one was, but it's something that will be reported back.
Okay, Mr. Ridgeway on the Marina Park Advisory Committee?
There's nothing to report, no change.
Okay. Rest of the council, any other committee activities you want to report on? City Clerk, let me ask you, is there a planning commission report?
No, there's not.
There's no planning commission report? Okay. Please continue.
Item number 12, Civic Center Finance Team Status Report.
Mr. Mayor, with the indulgence of the city council, if we could take an item out of order and bring item number 17 forward. This item is titled Review of General Plan Update Circulation System and Selection of Project Description for Environmental Impact Report. We have a consultant that will be here in just a few minutes, but there's a small window of availability for that consultant. We think the next item is going to take a probably a considerable amount of time. So, if we could see if we could get through item number 17, and Patty Temple would begin the staff report, and I think we'll have our consultant.
All right. What's the position of the city council on changing the order? It's fine? Mr., it's okay, so let's proceed. Thank you.
Patty?
Is this a new microphone?
No, the, the cover came off.
It looks so different. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Our consultant has arrived, but I think I'll go ahead and just give a brief overview of the staff report. It is a very short staff report. It's a basically a one and a half page memo plus a two and a half page letter from our... It's basically a one and a half page memo plus a two and a half page letter from our traffic consultant, Urban Crossroads. And Mr. Carlton Waters, our traffic engineering consultant for the general plan update, will be here to answer the technical questions you may have. If you turn to handwritten page four, which is the start of the letter, "Report from Urban Crossroads," you will note at the bottom of the page, "Start of a series of seven bullet points," which summarize seven significant roadway, future roadway improvements which were eliminated from our circulation system for the purpose of analyzing all of the alternatives developed by the general plan advisory committee. This was done to give the committee some information related to a worst-case traffic and circulation system impact that could result, should one or more of these rather controversial improvements not occur in the future. And very briefly, it was the extension of State Route 55, the Costa Mesa Freeway, to the city boundary line, no further widening of Coast Highway through Mariners' Mile, no extension of 19th Street across the Santa Ana River into Huntington Beach, no widening of Jamboree Road north of Ford Road. The current circulation plan shows that link increasing from six lanes to eight lanes in width, no grade separation at MacArthur Boulevard and Jamboree Road, no extension of 17th Street, and no extension of 15th Street. Because through the analysis of the alternatives, we actually did get an idea of those seven improvement possibilities, those that seem to reverberate with the greatest level of impact within the city's overall circulation plan. And based on the analysis of our traffic engineer, it was recommended that two of these seven improvements be retained for the purpose of the EIR analysis as part of the preferred land use alternative and circulation plan alternative. And those two improvements were the extension of 19th Street crossing the Santa Ana River, and the widening of Coast Highway to six lanes through Mariners' Mile, and this is from Newport Boulevard to Dover Drive. I think it's really important to know, and I think that in your reviewing of the traffic information provided on the alternatives, that these two areas seem to, without these improvements, seem to produce a fairly high number of real intersection deterioration in terms of its level of performance. And for these reasons, our traffic engineer recommended that the analysis include those two. The planning commission did consider this at their last meeting on the 30th. That was held prior to your special meeting on the 30th. The commission suggested that an additional item be added to the EIR alternative analysis, and that was the extension of 15th Street to Coast Highway. It was their feeling that if some development in Banning Ranch might be anticipated, and because their land use alternative recommendation was to consider some development in that area, that another alternative to crossing into the west side part of Costa Mesa and the State Route 55 corridor would be important. And for that reason, they made that recommendation.
Can I ask why 16th Street was not considered rather than 15th?
Actually, it was 17th Street or 15th Street. They did not articulate a reason. I think what they were interested in was an additional intersection down on Coast Highway. And whether that was an extension of 17th Street or 15th Street, I think we can talk to the traffic engineers as to what might be the most implementable alternative.
The reason why you would either consider 15th or 17th is that those are the two that are actually shown on the master plan of arterial highways. 17th is on the county's master plan, and 15th Street is on the city's master plan. Both 15th and 17th would intercoast highway at the same spot.
Good. Thanks.
And with that, should you have any technical questions? We do have Carlton Waters here.
Patty? One question related to, these streets are shown on our master plan of highways.
Currently, yes.
Currently. Now, is there going to be any study that reviews or gives us any indication of what the traffic would be if we implement our master plan? Or are you assuming if we don't study these, that we would modify the master plan of highways to delete them?
In case I misspeak, I'm sure Carlton will correct me. We have within our, both our baseline analysis and our general plan build-out analysis under the existing general plan, traffic modeling information that includes all of the planned improvements. It is my understanding from Mr. Waters that that information, combined with the new analysis, can be used to produce some kind of delta information that would compare this circulation system scenario with the existing master plan.
Okay. Next question is a technicality on, no widening on Jamboree Road. I believe that when that first came up, it was no widening on Jamboree Road between Ford Road and University.
Correct.
Because I think that we would really want that, to say that, because there may be some necessity for additional improvements on Jamboree northerly of San Diego Creek all the way up to campus. And so I don't think that, I think what you need to look at is allow yourself in that review to pin that down and draw it into just the University to Ford Road.
Yes, I think I'm going to defer to Mr. Waters on this. I believe when we heard the information from the general plan advisory committee, the concern was widening in the area of the East Bluff neighborhood. And I believe we left at least intersection widenings in the potential for northerly of there, but I will defer to Mr. Waters on that.
Carlton Waters from Urban Crossroads. Been working on your general plan here for a little while, and I don't know if I can say it any better than Patty just did. The area of concern has been the East Bluff area, where there was a potential widening to eight lanes shown in the currently adopted general plan, with the improvements to the SR 73 freeway and the direct connection to MacArthur Boulevard. What we've seen in the traffic numbers is a shift of traffic that no longer requires that kind of necess, no longer necessitates that kind of widening. But as Councilmember Webb indicated, we do have intersections within the airport area, and especially between the SR 73 freeway and campus, where potential spot widenings and arterial widenings may be required.
What does the no grade separation at MacArthur Boulevard and Jamboree do to your ability to be able to solve the problems at that location?
The intent of the circulation roadway system for the preferred alternative is to allow us to look at the traffic conditions and assess the need for various types of improvements. We have looked at traffic conditions with and without the 19th Street Bridge. We think that we can do sensitivity analysis that tells the council and the planning commission about what the differences will be if we do or do not construct that. The same thing is applicable to the grade separation at that particular intersection. If that is needed to accommodate the traffic flows that are forecast, then we can go ahead and look at that as a separate sensitivity or improvement type of analysis. We do not expect it to affect the travel demand forecasts that are driving the need for that improvement.
I guess I'm just confused then, so when we say no grade separation, that means you're just not going to do a separate model run just with a grade separation. You're going to do your sensitivity analysis, and if that sensitivity analysis shows that the only way the traffic can be solved is with a grade separation, you'd come back and tell us that?
Exactly correct.
So this doesn't mean that we can't consider it in the future?
Absolutely not. We will be considering that. That's the only thing that achieves a Level of Service D operations at that location.
Selich, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything. I'd just move, we accept the planning commission recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Nichols?
I do have a question, and that is, in Corona del Mar, we put in some improvements there. Are the improvements included in your traffic model? They've slowed down traffic considerably, and I wonder if they're included.
The traffic model shows nothing more than a four-lane section of roadway in terms of travel lanes, two through lanes in each direction. And the types of changes and operations that were accomplished by the landscaping and the median improvements in that area are more subtle than what the traffic model anticipates. If people want to come from point south through that area, they would. The model's showing that everybody that used to use that section is, or not everyone, but a substantial portion of the traffic is now using Newport Coast Drive.
But don't you think we should have traffic figures now relative to the ones that we had in 2001, 2002, which are supposed to be our baseline, so that we actually get some realistic numbers of what we're getting through there? Because we're getting a lot less through there than we did before.
Prior to the connection of Newport Coast Drive, the traffic volumes through Corona del Mar were substantially higher. The improvements that have been accomplished for landscape and beautification purposes have not substantially affected the traffic volumes through that.
At that time, we had a fifth street bypass, we had one-way streets. There were different things that were accomplishing at that point, too. We had diverted at one time over 10,000 cars a day up to Fifth Avenue and around Marguerite. Right now, we're beginning to see that again. We're seeing a huge amount of traffic at 4:30 in the afternoon coming down Marguerite. The traffic patterns are not the same as they were three or four years ago. And the configuration has changed considerably. We ought to have real numbers as a basis of your traffic examining.
We'll work closely with city staff to ensure that that is the case. Councilman Nichols?
You're saying you're assured that that is the case? Because I asked Edmondson for those numbers, and he said he doesn't have any back as far, he needs to go back to '96 to get those.
We have not seen any significant traffic changes, such as the ones that occurred when Newport Coast Drive was extended to Coast Highway, as a result of those improvements that I'm aware of. I'll go ahead and make sure that I coordinate that with Mr. Edmondson.
Thank you.
Does our motion to continue, go ahead and do the clarification on Jamboree Road that says no widening north of Ford Road to San Diego Creek?
That's part of my motion.
Second.
Okay. Any more council input on this? All right. I'm going to open up to the public.
Jim Hildreth, Newport Beach. How do you know? How do you know the traffic study? Unless you have the numbers, unless you've put out sensors, you don't know. It's speculation. So numbers need to be presented. Up-to-date numbers need to be presented. There's a common, it stated 15th Street and 17th Street going through Costa Mesa? Well, to PCH? Well, there's another city that has to be informed about this. It's called Huntington Beach, because that's where it would end up. And as I understand, what I've been hearing from the past, is that there's a lot of people that don't want it in Huntington Beach. So you have opposition about that. As for the traffic study, it has to be updated. We need to have, I, about three weeks ago, coming to the city council meeting, I saw that there was a traffic study right here in front, the city council meeting, on this side of the bridge onto the council, and then after the city council, to find out how many people are going into the peninsula. I don't see any reason why that can also be done with all these places that you're talking about. Needs to be upgraded. I agree. It needs to be current status. And also, if you're going to affect other cities, I still say you've got to be neighbors with your neighbors and let them know what's going on. But there is, Huntington Beach doesn't want the influx of individuals going into PCH. I think it's already bottlenecked as is. I don't know how you're going to situate traffic signals to accommodate all these different cars going in there. There's going to be a bottleneck. Somebody needs to think about what goes on after you do such a certain thing. Just because it goes up to your city line doesn't exonerate your responsibility after the fact. You need to think about your neighbors. So I, Nichols, I agree with you. It needs to be current. But this me-me attitude of Newport Beach needs to change. It needs to say, okay, fine, we have a problem. Expanding Jamboree, geez, that thing's been worked on so many bloody times. I've been around here so many years, and I've seen it worked on so many times. It's amazing. In fact, the center aisle's still buckling because of the improper trees and the improper structure for the center of it. What the city does is a waste of time and money. While the time is searching, which may not be a waste of time, but actually, the actual work that is being done on a lot of the city's streets may be a waste of money. I think that the city needs to revamp, rethink what they're doing and spend our money correctly. It's, it is something that is, may not be a really bothersome thing for a lot of residents. However, each time the city spends money, it does increase their property taxes. And the, I think that the general public of City Newport Beach has to have, has the right to know that their money is being spent correctly and wisely. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back. Counsel, if any other comment? No, then let's vote.
Motion carries.
City Clerk?
Back to item number 12, which is the Civic Center Finance Team Status Report.
Mr. Blue, why don't you get us started on this item, please?
I will get us started, and I'm asking Mr. Danner to come in. Dennis, why don't you join me right here? Mr. Mayor, in the two city council meetings in August, we had lengthy discussion on the three different components of the Civic Center project, which are the fire station, proposed fire station, the 350-vehicle parking garage, and a 72,000-square-foot city hall structure. Those issues were looked at with a fine-tooth comb by the city council, all in the, with the intention of trying to put our arms around all of the issues that would be involved in you deciding whether we are going to move forward with the new Civic Center complex or not. One of the important components in that whole discussion and decision-making process is how we would finance that project. And when we had a meeting in May where city council gave direction to zero in on one of the three alternatives that were presented, it was very obvious to Dennis and I that we needed to move forward very quickly with assembling a finance team in order, so that we could begin generating the information to provide both the city council and the public answers to questions that they would have about financing this proposed project. So we have a PowerPoint presentation that we would like to reveal with you tonight to begin an education process, and also give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you might like to have. And we have our financing team that has been assembled that will be here to address any questions that you might have.
Mr. Blue, I'm going to interrupt you at that point, because tonight, we're going to advise our residents, the public, what financing tool is being proposed. In two weeks, we're going to give you the other side of that issue, and that is why city staff believes that we can afford to make a stream of payments to pay for this new facility. In other words, how can the city justify making these sort of payments that we're going to be explained tonight? First is how, this is this COP instrument that's going to be used for financing. In two weeks, it's going to be the city's finances. Are they in order to make a reasonable decision, if the city council so wishes, to proceed on this path? So it's going to be this instrument tonight, and then the city finance side in two weeks. Thank you.
Very true, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that clarification. The first PowerPoint page, go ahead, is the overall financing objectives that we started out this process as far as structuring the finance team with. The construction of the three components that I talked about and the current cost of that Civic Center complex is about $46.4 million. So, we want to do three things as far as what our intent in looking at how we can accomplish the financing. One is to undertake a prudently structured financing program. And by prudently structured, we mean one that is logical, that makes good common sense, that can be understood by the person in the street, and that really serves the city council and the residents well. Number two, we want to maintain a high credit quality standing with municipal rating agencies and bond insurers. And that translates into being able to pursue cost-effective financing to ensure cost-effective borrowing, because that's what the community would expect. And our third objective is to work with reputable and experienced finance team to ensure proper disclosure and achieve the lowest cost of funds. And this is how that we would accomplish our objectives one and two. We want reputable and experienced team to make sure that we do the proper disclosures, that we are respected when we go to the professionals that need to rate this city as far as our financial capability, and also purchase insurance if that's what we want to do. And we want to structure the city's financing plan to achieve the lowest cost of funds. Now, I'm going to let Dennis take over, but in May, Dennis and I decided that we needed to bring some expertise on board and we needed to bring that, those people to the issue as soon as possible. And these people are consultants. They haven't charged us anything yet. It's based upon whether we move forward and do the COP lease revenue transactions. So, we could have gone through an RFQ or RFP process, because there are professionals that we could bring on board and go through a process. But we figured that that process would take us about a month, so Dennis and I put our heads together. We have done financings before with professions, professional people, and we decided that there were people that we had worked with that knew our city well and had worked with our city, that we could get on board and that we could start this process very quickly. And Dennis is going to talk about those people at this time.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, members of the city council. I'd like to just take a few minutes this evening to talk about the team that we've assembled, why we've assembled, why we've picked that team. And then, on the next slide, I'll discuss a few of the financing options that we've looked at. The first, first group that we selected was a financial advisor, and that's Fieldman Rollup and Associates. You can read their, their experience. From Fieldman tonight, we have Robert Poor and Paul Bender.
Mr. Danner, maybe you can explain to the public what each group does.
I'll do that, sir.
Sure, thanks.
We also selected Bond Counsel Stradlin Yaca. We selected them to not only be our Bond Counsel, but our Disclosure Counsel. From Stradlin Yaca, tonight, we have Dave McEwen and Albert Reyes. And then, for underwriter, we selected Stone and Youngberg. From Stone and Youngberg, tonight, we have Bill Huck and Ken Holman. And just briefly, what roles each of these firms will play. The financial advisor acts as an agent of the city and assists the city in all matters concerning the financial structure, timing, marketing, and pricing of the proposed new issue. They help in preparation of bond-related documents, preparation of credit presentations to the rating agencies and insurers, and help select and negotiate with underwriters and bond insurers. The Bond Counsel, which is Stradlin Yaca, is retained by the city for their special expertise in bond law. Their key role is to ensure compliance with the state and federal laws concerning the issuance and inscription of the security pledge, provide a legal opinion as to the tax-exempt status of the certificates, in this case, certificates that we're recommending. And Bond Counsel or separate Disclosure Counsel may also be retained by the city to provide advice on city disclosure obligations and to prepare the official statement and continuing disclosure agreements. And finally, the underwriter is the broker-dealer that purchases the obligations from the city for resale to the investors on a primary offering. The underwriter's key roles are reviewing the creditworthiness of the transaction, recommending financing structure, and the best time to enter the market, telling the credit story to the rating agencies, insurers, and investors, and purchasing the obligations from the city and reselling them to the investors.
Let me stop you right there. City Manager, when is it appropriate for city council to address questions? At the conclusion? Or as you go?
I think at the conclusion would be better.
Good, all right, it's fine.
If you could hold them. I would just like to say the financial advisor, in simplistic terms, looks after the city's interests. We are dealing with a complex financial transactions, no matter how we would finance a $46 or $50 million project. So, we're dealing with Bond Counsel and underwriters, and Dennis and I have certainly dealt with these kind of people before, but the technical expertise that we bank on is on the financial advisor to make sure, and dealing with all of the other consultants and professionals that we will be dealing with, that they will always be looking after our interests. So, it isn't just staff dealing with these people, but we have hired professionals to represent the city in this transaction should we go forward.
Thanks. And just briefly, to give you an example of, one of the reasons we selected these firms is because we've worked with them before and we're comfortable with, with the way they do business and their professionalism. As an example, we've used Fieldman Rollup as a financial advisor on the 1998 Ciosa refunding, 1998 Panetta Canyon JPA with the Newport-Mason Unified School District, 1998 library COP refundings. In 2004, you'll recall, Assessment District 68 and 69, they served as our financial advisor. Stradlin Yaca has served as our Bond Counsel or Disclosure Counsel on the original 1994 water revenue bonds, the 1998 library COP refundings, and the 1998 water revenue bond refundings. And finally, Stone and Youngberg, the underwriter that we've selected, worked on our 1995 Ciosa Series A, 1997 Ciosa Series B, and as well as the 1998 Ciosa refunding. One of the decisions we had to make early on was whether to open this up, the underwriting up to a competitive sale or negotiated sale. And we decided that negotiated sale would be the best for the city in this instance. The pros that we looked at were the timing, the structure, and flexibility. A major advantage of a negotiated sale is the ability to sell the obligations at any time and to change the structure of the issue in response to changing market conditions or projected timing. If you have a competitive sale, you have to publish notice, and it has to be sold on that particular day, or you have to cancel the issue, cancel the sale. We also looked at the assistance in the originating issue. While the underwriter's primary role is to purchase and sell the obligations to investors, in a negotiated sale, the underwriter advises the city in structuring the obligation in a fashion that is marketable and practical, participates in the preparation of the official statement, and making presentations to the rating agencies and bond insurers. And finally, they're part of the effective pre-sale marketing. Because the underwriter is assured the right to purchase the bond, the underwriter can conduct more extensive pre-sale marketing than in a competitive sale. By developing information about market demand for the bonds, or in this case, certificates, the underwriter can reduce the risk presumably loaded lending to a lower-risk premium. We did a little research. In 2000, in the year 2004, there were 183 COP issues in California. Of those, 157, or 86 percent, valued at $24 billion, were sold as a negotiated issue. The balance of 26, or 14 percent, of the issues were on competitive sale, and that was valued at $833 million. We checked those numbers back to the year 2000 for the last five calendar years, and the 85 percent figure holds for those, in that, in that period of time, 85 percent of the COP sales in California have been done on a negotiated basis. Quickly here, I'd like to go through some of the financing options that we looked at. Of course, the first one is spend cash to build a project. There's considerable question whether you want to spend current assets to purchase an asset, the current assets to purchase an asset will, that will last for a long, long time. We anticipate city hall being with us for 50 years, and we question the prudency of spending cash for it, plus the fact that we don't really have the cash on hand for that option. There's opportunity cost and lost investment revenues, and we also have other capital projects that we're looking at that we may need our cash for. The second option we looked at was a general obligation bond. That requires a two-thirds vote of the people. It also, a big negative in my opinion, necessitates a tax increase, and that is an ad valorem tax, which means that the tax is based upon the value of the property. So, if you have two properties in Newport Beach, one that is on the assessment rolls at $250,000 versus one that's been recently purchased and it's on the assessment rolls of $1 million, that property that's valued at $1 million would pay four times the ad valorem rate as that property that's $250,000. There's a fairness issue there of do those property owners use city hall at a different Plus, the fact that there's many, there may be businesses in town, people that small, own small businesses in town but don't live here. They don't get a right to vote on this. So, again, we looked at the fairness issue. Well, we believe the right way to go is to issue certificates of participation. Certificates require no tax increase. They're not backed by the full faith and credit of the city. They're payment out of available revenues. They use existing funds for the annual lease payment. The interest component of the payment, it says likely, but we're sure that it's tax-exempt. It's paid as you use. In other words, the debt service will be paid over the life of the asset. In this year, in this case, we're recommending 30 years. If for any reason the city hall, parking structure, or the fire station cannot be occupied, we're under no obligation to make lease payments for that period of time when it cannot be occupied. And finally, we're in a very favorable market right now. We're at historic lows for interest rates in the 30-year AAA range. If we sold certificates today, and I'd let the financial experts talk about this more, but we believe we could sell these at a coupon rate of about 4.5 percent. So, that, that is our recommendation, but we've got, I'd like to introduce Robert Poor of our financial advisor, Fieldman Rollup, who'll go through the rest of the slides and cover anything that I may have missed.
Thank you, Mr. Danner, Mr. Bluehead. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Robert Poor. I'm Vice President with Fieldman Rollup and Associates. We're financial advisors specializing in municipal finance. I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, to walk through you this, walk through with you this presentation and give you a broad overview and hopefully give you some useful and helpful information on certificates of participation. The recommended approach, as Mr. Danner indicated, would be to sell certificates of participation or COPs. As with any financing of this magnitude, financings are similar to getting a mortgage on your home, so I'll use that analogy whenever I can. Here, the city's going to promise to make payments that are going to be made to investors who are going to buy interest in the lease payments that the city is going to draft. So, the primary, the primary promise will be to promise to annually budget and appropriate, an appropriate lease payment in the city's budget each year from existing revenue sources. Much like a bond issue, the interest component of annual lease payments are tax-exempt. That way, investors do not pay taxes on the interest component of the payments made to them. This is also important to the city, because tax-exempt obligations carry lower interest rates than do obligations that are not tax-exempt. Thereby, you lower your interest rates that you pay, as well as your interest expense over the life of the issue. A third promise is that you will promise to issue the certificates in accordance with state and federal laws that will make them tax-exempt. The city, just like any other potential borrower, has to demonstrate its creditworthiness. The stronger the credit quality, the issue, of the issue and the city, again, the lower the interest rate, then the lower the payments will be over the life of the certificates. It's important, I think, to note that certificates of participation do not require a pledge of taxes or the levy of an additional tax. They're not a general obligation of the city. You do not pledge your taxing power. Additionally, the Supreme Court has ruled on several occasions that certificates of participation are not considered debt under the constitutional definition of debt. Certificates of participation have been around since 1979. They've withstood legal challenges, and they're very well-used in California, as we'll see on the next slide. This is a slide comprised of information from the California Debt and Investment Advisory Committee, and it shows that the amount of COPs issued by local issuers, not including the state, of the par amounts and the number of bond issues, or excuse me, COPs done over the last eight years. The average is roughly $3.5 billion each year over the past eight years. And for the first part of, the first half of the year 2005, 91 issues have been sold, and they comprise a par amount of almost $2 billion, 1.9 billion. So, you can see it's a very popular way to finance capital improvements, if you so desire to continue with the project. The next slide simply gives you examples of issuers in California that have used certificates of participation to finance capital projects. It's a veritable who's who. You've got San Diego County Water Authority, Imperial Irrigation District, which are two very large utilities here in Southern California. You have Los Angeles and the city and county of San Francisco, as well as the regions of the University of California. On a more local level, you've got many neighboring cities having, using this financing method over the last several years, including Placentia, Fullerton, Lake Forest, Santa Ana, Laguna Hills, and Mission Viejo.
Robert, if I could jump in there, the 2003 Rancho Santa Margarita, 12.8 public building, was a city hall project, and also the 2001 Mission Viejo, 17.5 million, was a city hall project. So, there are numerous public buildings that COPs have been issued by these entities, and a couple of city hall examples on this slide.
Thank you. And in fact, the city of Newport Beach is on the slide in 1994. Actually, I believe in 1992 originally, the city issued COPs to finance the library over near Fashion Island, and then it was refunded again, I believe, in 1994. Well, this slide encompasses two separate cash flows. For the convenience of everybody, I think I'd like to take it, beginning with the sale of the certificates. And those are the blue lines, the certificate proceeds. If the city chooses, if the city council chooses to continue with the project and finance the projects that are being contemplated, and in this case, it will direct the underwriter to offer the certificates to sale, for sale to the investors. The investors will purchase the certificates from the city but through the underwriter, and the investors pay the underwriter directly. The underwriter then transfers the sale proceeds, less its commission, or less its fee, excuse me, directly to the trustee that's been designated by the city. And I believe for your purposes, you've designated U.S. Bank as your trustee. The trustee has several functions. It holds those, those certificate proceeds in trust. It segregates them out, so it will have several different funds. A cost-of-issuance fund, which will use, be used to pay the consultants. cost of issuance fund, which will be used to pay the consultants, and pay the bond insurance, and pay the rating agencies their fees. A separate trust fund, which will be called a construction fund or improvement fund, and in there will be deposited the money that's used to construct the facilities. And a third fund will be the debt service reserve fund. The construction fund will be held, as I said, by the trustee as the project progresses. The contractors, the architects, will send their invoices to the city. The city will review those invoices, make sure the appropriate work has been done, approve those invoices, forward them on to the trustee, and the trustee, once it receives the approval of the city, will thereupon pay the contractors directly. I'll talk a little bit more about the reserve fund later on, but the reserve fund is essentially a deposit into, again, a separate trust fund, and it enhances the credit quality of the structure of the issue. The second primary function of the trustee is to act as an intermediary between the city and the investors. The city will make semi-annual lease payments to theoretically the Lessor, which is the Newport Beach Public Facilities Corporation. The Lessor simply assigns those payments from the city directly to the trustee. So in reality, the Lessee, which is the city of Newport Beach, will pay the trustee directly the annual lease payment, but to installments over the year. The trustee then forwards on to the investors their due, an appropriate principal and interest payments that are due on their investment. If we can go to the next slide. Just as with an individual entering into a mortgage, there are different terms available to the city, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years as well. This chart demonstrates what the differences are in going out for a 30-year, or a 20-year, or a 10-year mortgage, so to speak, and assuming 4.64 million in project proceeds. Just as you would expect, the longer the term of payments, the greater the overall interest expense there would be. However, the longer the term of the certificates, the lower the annual payments tend to be. So it's kind of, you know, it's kind of like getting your mortgage and mixing and matching what is, what fits my budget. Do I want to do a 10-year mortgage? Do I want to do 15? Do I want to get a 30? So the city has that option in this financing structure as well. And you can see that, on an average, a 30-year lease term will require an annual payment of a little bit more than $3.1 million. A 20-year lease term will require almost $4 million payment a year, and whereas a 10-year lease term would require about a $7.8 million payment per year. This next chart is an example of the potential sources and uses should the city desire to proceed with the project and with the financing. I'll just skip to the uses at this point. The true driving element in the size of the overall certificate issue is the project fund deposit. The project fund deposit is there to pay for costs associated with construction of the project. As a percentage of the overall sources, it's roughly 92 percent. Now, the reserve fund is really a required credit feature. It's required by bond investors, the credit rating agencies, as well as insurance companies. The reserve fund sits in a special trust account, and it is there in the event that the city, for whatever reason, doesn't make a lease payment. The trustee can then use those funds on deposit to pay the investors. In our case, the reserve fund is equal to roughly one year's lease payment. Additionally, the reserve fund can earn, can be invested in a number of different investments, and the interest earnings on those reserve funds can be used to offset a portion of the lease payment each year. There are certain expenses that will be incurred in connection with a certificate of participation financing. The first that we have there is bond insurance, which is approximately 1 percent of the overall expenses. And bond insurance is a little like having your rich uncle co-sign your loan for you. It's a credit enhancement facility offered by insurance companies that specifically deal in this business. They guarantee payments by municipalities to investors. So there are five AAA insured, insurance companies in the United States right now, and we believe that, certainly with the credit that we've seen that the city has, that you would qualify for a bond insurance. So the bond insurer essentially guarantees the payments in the event the city does not make the payments. The other cost of issuances are primarily to pay the consultants and the underwriting firm, the attorneys, the printers, fees to the credit agencies, and the title insurance company. Were there any questions on this slide? I know it's a little...
I have one.
But...
Is the, are these going to be par bonds? The $52 million, that's going to be the amount of the bonds? That's not a discounted amount?
My recollection is that that's how we, that's how this issue was prepared. Yes.
Okay, then in your, in your debt service schedule, do you have the reserve fund going into the last year's debt service? Is that calculated in that?
Yes, we do. Not in the gross debt service, but it would be part of the net debt service.
Okay. And then on the, on the bond insurance, is what you're expecting to buy, that's just an estimate of what you think that the market's going to provide.
That's correct.
Does that, does that provide the maximum amount of credit enhancement for the city? Or are there other things that we could do to get this rate lower? Or do you think that's the optimum point where we're at versus what you would pay for additional credit enhancement versus what you would get in terms of adjustments on the interest rate? How did you do that?
No, that's a very, very good question. Thank you for asking that. Bond insurance is the optimal way to get the highest rating for any issue. They're AAA, which is the highest rating possible. What we're planning to do, if the city, the city council so instructs us to do, is we'll take the city's credit package to at least two rating agencies, and we'll get ratings assigned by those two rating agencies. It's very likely, it's highly likely it won't be a AAA. It's likely probably be an A-plus or in the AA-minus range, somewhere in there. So the advantage of bond insurance is if you purchase bond insurance, you're automatically elevated to a AAA rating. Therefore, you can sell the certificates at the lowest possible interest rate because it carries the highest rating available. Now, the fee that you pay to the bond insurers must be cost-effective, and at the time that we receive bids from different insurers, we'll identify which is the most advantageous bid to the city, and then determine based on what the uninsured rating is of the city versus the insured rating of the city. Run, literally, it's very, it's very mathematical. You run two scales, one with the insurance, one without, and whichever is the most cost-effective, whichever has the lowest debt service over the entire period of time is the recommended way to go. So bond insurance may not be cost-effective in some circumstances if the bid is too high.
Okay. And then my final question is, you have up there, you've got the interest earnings, and then you've got a little line going down, the contingency.
Right.
And having those equalling out. Could you explain how that's working, please?
Certainly. The interest earnings is based on the earnings in the project fund. It's just an estimate of interest earnings that, if you can invest the project fund at 3 percent, we said, which the interest rate, I think, is a fairly conservative number. Over an expected period of time, you would, a figure of $1.4 million would be generated. That money could be used for construction purposes. It could be used to offset lease payments as well. It could even be used to call bonds or call certificates.
Okay. And then you're basing that on, because it goes through '07, so you're basing it on some type of drawdown schedule on the, on the project fund because it's not going to remain a constant amount. So do you have assumed some kind of schedule there?
That's correct. And I think we just estimated it monthly, you know, evenly over that period of time. We didn't do anything, we didn't do anything scientific at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Diggle?
Yes. What if residents wanted to buy a piece of City Hall and they wanted to become a certificate holder? How would they go about doing that, and what might be some of the advantages to do that?
Well, you know, they certainly can. If the council tells us to proceed with the plan that's been laid out tonight, they can contact Stone and Youngberg and buy the bonds directly from them. They can open an account with Stone and Youngberg. Certainly, the advantages are, you know, community pride, get the tax advantage if you're in the appropriate tax bracket, if you're in a high enough tax bracket. You know, and I think it supports the city and the city council as well.
Robert, I think we could, in advance of any other publicity, make sure that the people in the community knew that these were going to become available and give the city a heads up. So, you know, maybe they could be first in line. I think Bill Huck would talk to us about doing that.
Yeah, I think that'd be a nice gesture to accommodate our residents.
Absolutely.
If they're interested.
As I said, the city has used certificates of participation in the past. It financed a library several years ago. But one of the things I also think is important to realize is that certificates of participation are not off-balance-sheet financing mechanisms. As you can see, this chart's been taken directly from the audit of financials, and it clearly show the certificates of participation, and, you know, they're further detailed. As, you know, this showed in the audits as a liability and further detailed in the notes. Do you have a question there?
Can you tell us, just for comparison, what the rates are on those bonds?
Well, currently, right now, 30-year.
Oh, I know what those old ones are. We've already issued those. I mean, are those all been refinanced or those old rates?
Oh.
Off the top of my head, Mayor, I can't tell you what the rates are. I know that the original library certificates were issued in 1994 and refinanced in 1998 because it was advantageous to do so. Likewise, the water revenue bonds were issued in 1994 and refinanced in 1998. And so it depends upon the call provisions of those bonds, et cetera, but they're at a very favorable interest rate at this time as well.
So are they, when they've been refinanced, is that what the comparable rates were in '98? Are they as low as they are now? Are they lower now? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, okay. My guess is, I'm not completely familiar with the refinancing, but my guess is the interest rates are lower now.
Well, I guess what I'm getting to, where are the interest rates on historical 50-year span right now? Are they lowest, mid-range?
They're at near historical lows.
All right. That's, that was the, that was the point of the question.
We did look at the opportunity to refinance those COPs, and as Dennis indicated, you can't refund them for several years, but we're keeping our eye on them.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to point out a couple of figures on that chart right there. The balance as of June 30th of 2005, so as far as the city debt is concerned, as of June 30th, we had $17.3 million in debt of all kinds, with an annual debt payment that added together comes to $3 million. So we already have $3 million a year in some sort of debt that we are paying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, just, we'd like to present a sequence of events. The initial, the initial step in any COP or any financing program would be for the agency to establish the desired time of proceeds and its overall financing structure and desires, then assembling a financing team. The, really, then the first step after that lies with bond counsel in preparing legal documents for the, for the team to review and comment on. Disclosure counsel, which typically prepares the preliminary official statement. The preliminary official statement is really the document used by the city to offer the certificates to the markets. In essence, it describes the sources and uses of funds, where the payments are going to come from, credit features of the city, as well as details regarding the city, statistical evidence of the city. The next step typically is to prepare and present credit packages to the rating agencies and the bond insurance companies. Then there's probably a two, three-week lag where we hear back from the rating agencies and the insurance companies. We get the ratings, we get the insurance bids. At that point, we analyze them, make recommendations with respect to the insurance especially. Then we'll, at that point, we would confirm our understanding of construction schedule, cost estimates, and contracts, because as you can see, as Mr. Solich asked, there is an impact to the city with the interest earnings on the project fund, so that's an important feature as well. Then at that point, we would come back and get to see all our smiling faces again at the city council for your consideration of the actual legal documents and your disclosure document, and any other documents and any other questions you have. If the council so desires to proceed with the project and with the financing, they would so designate to us. And then at that point, and only at that point, would we mail the POS to potential investors. Approximately two weeks after that, although at any time, pretty much in the interim, we'd be able to sell the certificates. And then within two weeks of that, close the, close the COP issue. So with that, unless the staff has any further comments.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into questions, I would like to ask Dave McEwen and Bill Huck from Bond Counsel and Underwriter to maybe come forward and just introduce themselves so that you have some name and face recognition in case some questions are sent their way.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, I am Dave McEwen, Ms. Stradlin Yack, and Carlson Ralph, and we'll be acting as Bond Counsel and Disclosure Counsel.
Thank you.
Bill Huck of Stone and Youngberg, with your bond underwriter, in this case, COP underwriter. We'd be very much pleased to sell these securities to residents of Newport Beach and other places.
All right. Mr. Nichols, questions?
Yeah. My question is something that I don't understand, so I'm not sure who to ask it to. You spoke of the COPs as being interest-free as far as taxes, and I, my question is, is a regular bond, that total is interest-free, right? I mean, to the person who gets paid back?
Sure.
Now, is a COP the same, or are they different?
No, that's a very good question. It is the same. There are essentially two components that are paid back to investors. There's a principal component and an interest component. The interest component is what we refer to as tax-exempt, so you don't have to pay taxes on that interest income on your tax returns.
And the other is just return on investment?
And the other is just, right, the return of your principal.
So that's the same as any bond issue?
That's correct.
And so this is, the COP is a tax-exempt issue for the purchaser, the same as a bond if we went out?
Yes.
And, yeah. So the person who purchases it... And, yeah, so the person who purchases it would be able to buy equivalently the same amount of either, or is one usually a little lower?
Well, the interest rates on tax-exempt obligations are typically lower, because they offer the tax advantage of not having to pay taxes on that income.
So you just said the COP, the income I get back on that, the interest, which is my income, I don't pay taxes on?
That's correct.
So why then is the bond have a better tax advantage? Or maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying.
Okay, well, the interest rate will be lower than a taxable bond, so if you purchase the bond from General Electric, the income on that would not be tax-exempt.
Tax exempt.
That would be taxable.
Right.
So that's a higher interest rate.
But the difference between a bond, which has the backing of the city, and a COP, which is circuitous and supposed to be the same thing, I guess, well, it doesn't, the city doesn't have an obligation, the insurance company has an obligation, which is still based on the ability of the city to pay.
That's right.
Okay, so it's somewhat the same. Is there a difference in return on investment and the two ways of doing it?
Typically, a COP, the coupon rate could be a little bit higher.
So the interest rate would be a little-
Very minimal amount, three to five basis points. That's the difference between a 455 and a 450.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. You'll have your time. Maybe we can explain maybe the difference between a COP and a bond. If we use a COP, let me pose a question.
Sure.
You issue a COP, you build a City Hall, tsunami comes, washes it away. You do the same thing with a general revenue bond, what's the difference to the city? If the tsunami washes this away, is the city obligated to continue to make lease payments under a COP?
No, it's not.
What happens to the bond holders?
They'll be paid by the bond insurance companies.
Right, but in the case of a bond?
A bond that is, let's say, secured by-
A regular bond.
Right, well, you've got water revenue bonds, so we'll use that analogy. So if the water enterprise was completely destroyed, and there was no bond insurance, it's likely that the bond investors would not receive some of their-
Right, in the case, if you had a bond on this, the city would have to make payments whether the tsunami knocked the City Hall down or not.
Right.
If the City Hall was not here anymore, the bond, the city would still be obligated.
Correct.
A COP, if the building, which you're leasing, is no longer there, there is no obligations to continue to make lease payments of something you can't use.
Correct.
That's the big difference between a COP. And in the first case, the insurance company is out with a COP. The second case, the city has to make payments whether the building's here or not.
But that's based on the fact that you have bond, that the bond that we would take out would have no insurance. If we took insurance out on the bond, they'd be identical as far as repayment, right?
But under the COP structure, the city would not have use or occupancy of the facilities, and so therefore it could abate the lease.
Well, I guess the difference is-
And it would not legally have to make those payments.
Well, the difference is, when you have a bond, the city owns the City Hall, and they finance it, just like they finance it with the bond. In a COP, they're a tenant.
Correct.
And they're making lease payments. And the lease instrument says, if we don't have use of the building, then I'm not taking lease payments anymore. The other one is, you already own it, and you've lost what you've owned. It's fallen down, been flooded, washed away, and therefore it doesn't matter. You still owe the debt because you borrowed the money. That is a big difference between a COP and a regular bond.
But isn't that different, but I'm just trying to establish, that difference is the insurance. If I bought insurance for the bond, similar to what I have to do on the COP, I'd be back to the exact same spot, because the insurance would pay for the fact that my building got washed away.
If-
Could somebody answer that?
In the instance where-
That may be illegal. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, let me take a shot at answering this. I think where you're going with this is comparing the difference between a general obligation bond and a COP or a lease revenue type of an obligation. In the COP obligation, the lease is the security, and you're selling a certificate of participation in that lease agreement. Under the California debt limit, the lease agreement is a contingent obligation, and it's, you can only make payments on that in each year based upon your right to occupy the property for that year. With respect to a general obligation bond, that's secured by a tax levied over and above the 1% Prop 13 limit, and that goes on as long as you have that debt outstanding. If, in the example, the City Hall is destroyed, you still have an obligation for the balance of that bond issue, to levy that tax and to collect that money and to pay those bondholders. It has really nothing to do with whether it's an insured obligation or not. Whether it's insured or not is important to the bondholders or the certificate buyers, because they know they can get paid without regard to whether there is a facility there that has an abated lease. The bond insurer does not get paid, because the building's no longer there, and the city can no longer make payments on that lease. So it's the insurer in that circumstance that takes the risk of loss, and they'll impose certain requirements on us in the form of insurance, liability insurance, catastrophe-type insurance, earthquake insurance, rental interruption insurance, all of those things to protect their position. They'll also want to make sure that it's an essential facility, and a City Hall is about as essential facility as you can have. From their standpoint, particularly from their standpoint, and I think from any citizen's standpoint, that would be true, but that's how they protect themselves.
This is the COP, the purchasers of the COP would do this?
No.
And ensure insurance.
The bond insurer, the city will provide the bond insurance. The bond insurer will impose those requirements on the city to protect their interests. But ultimately, if the facility is destroyed and is not usable, then there is no payment by the city. But with a general obligation bond, the city would continue to make payments. Even if it was insured, they'd make the payments to the bond insurer, who would, you know, if there was a default on the bond.
If I may interject here, I think the point that Councilman Nichols is making, or, and maybe I can make it for him, if we did do a general obligation bond and the building was destroyed, we'd still owe the money to the bondholders, correct?
Correct.
But a prudent city would buy insurance on their building. I think we have other buildings in town. Do we not insure our buildings? So there would be other insurance that would repay the debt. So from a destruction standpoint, whether it's COPs and we don't have to pay the lease because we can't use the building, and the COP purchasers require the underwriters or whoever issues the bonds to buy insurance to protect them so that they get their money, whether the building is here or not, or whether we do general obligation bonds and we separately go out and buy insurance on our building, it has the same ultimate effect, correct? Assuming that we do buy insurance to protect our building.
And assuming that you have the correct level of insurance, right?
Okay, but it is a risk that can be insured around.
May I?
One way or another.
Well, to the extent that that insurance will cover all of those hazards.
Well, if you can buy insurance for COPs that would cover all those hazards, I'd assume we can go out in the marketplace and buy similar insurance under a general obligation bond.
Right, but that's still a risk that the insurance company takes that the city doesn't take.
I think that the insurance, though, pays for, I mean, generally, if you have insurance and your house burns down, it pays to rebuild your house.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what the insurance would do, and I think the point of the COPs is that for the period of time that the city doesn't have use of the facility while it's being rebuilt, whether it's with insurance proceeds or not, that we wouldn't have to pay the payments.
But, and I don't know, I'm not in the insurance business, but I know in my own business, that I have business interruption insurance that pays me money while my business is not usable and things like that. I believe that there are products out there that you can provide that, you know, if my house burns down, they give me money to go rent to another place. So there are other methods of insurance that would, can substitute. Now, whether the cost is the same, I guess you have to figure that all out.
Yeah, clearly, there are insurance provisions out there or products that we could buy. My point was that there may be, you may buy all the insurance that is available, and it may not cover the ultimate risk that causes the destruction of that building.
Okay, so there may be some slight difference, but certainly not, it's not black and white.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Dave?
Thank you.
Well, there may not be, you may not be able to cover a risk either. There may not be tsunami insurance.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
There may not be. You might have earthquake insurance, but there may not be a pool to actually make a payment. The fact is, that is not a risk that's on the city's side with a COP. That's a risk that's on, ultimately, the insurance company that's insuring the bonds. It's not a city risk. It's less risky proposition.
Right, and to take a recent example with Hurricane Katrina, I've heard rumors, and it's just rumors, a lot of people had hurricane insurance, but the damage that was caused was not from the hurricane, it was from the flood caused by the hurricane, and they're denying coverage on that basis. So that kind of a risk, you can't just, you know-
But flood insurance was available, they chose not to buy it.
Right.
Well, hopefully, we would not make that same mistake that they did as a public entity.
Councilman Diggle?
Dave, I had a question for you, because I know you know a lot about bonds and so on. I had heard somewhere on the news that with Hurricane Katrina, that there had been bond proposals on those levies, there had been a vote of the people, and the people had said, no, they don't want to reinforce those levies. Do you know anything about that?
I don't know anything about that.
Ms. Selig?
Yeah, I don't know who would answer this, but just getting back to the insurance issue, particularly on the casualty insurance. Do we have an estimate as far as what the bond buyers are going to, the investors are going to be requiring of the city, and an estimate what the premiums are going to be? Do you have any feeling for that whatsoever? There's going to be some level of insurance required?
Yes.
Abatement risk, the whole nine yards.
Rental interruption insurance, for sure, 18 to 24 months. Casualty and liability insurance, fire, the typical insurance products that you would have for this kind of a project building. I think that's it. In terms of premiums for all of that, that's someone else's area of expertise.
So are we going to get that before we make our final decision on this, as to what the additional insurance? I assume the existing facility is insured to some level, and so we're going to be having a higher level of insurance, which would follow you'd have increased insurance premiums, and what that level's going to be?
That's right. That would be a part of the summary that would be brought back to you as to the total cost of the project.
And-
Could we get the ones for the bonds, then, that would cover us to some extent?
Sure.
So when do we get that on the, is that on the schedule that they showed us, or is that on some other schedule? He has a COP issuance summary. What step in that process do we get the information?
I guess that question is, what is going to be required of us, you know, to be insured as a AAA rating?
Oh, no, 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 I know. I think it's the other side. What will be required in addition to the minimum rent payment to what would be the lease obligation of the city under the COP lease, in essence? It's going to be a rent payment plus some basic triple-net costs, such as insurance premiums and other things, you know, and some, I assume, maintenance, ongoing maintenance obligations of the facility, basically like a triple-net lease. Isn't that what you're asking?
Well, I'm basically just asking the insurance component of-
Right.
They must have some idea of what type of insurance, whether it's flood, earthquake, casualty, and then, you know, when are we going to know what that number is, and what the, you know, the people that are going to buy the bonds, they're going to set the level of the insurance that we're going to have to buy. And, you know, when are we going to know, what are they going to require, when are we going to price it, and when is it going to, within the context of this schedule, when is it disclosed to us?
Well, with respect to what insurance will be required, we have, as Dave pointed out, comprehensive general liability insurance, fire, earthquake risk. I believe the city has earthquake for its other properties. So your typical casualty insurance and your rental interruption insurance. I'm looking at Mr. Danner, thinking we could probably get an idea of what those additional costs would be within a week or so.
We would have to get, as Mr. McEwen said, we would have to have all those types of insurances before we'd settle this issue. We haven't got quotes for those yet, but that would all be brought back to you at the time you approve the financing documents.
There would be, we would not, typically, if we did a bond issue, get a rental insurance, though. I mean, that would, we would carry that ourselves on a bond issue, right?
It would be required as part of the bond documents.
Oh, it would be required, too. So then the insurances are-
Yes.
Almost entirely parallel, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think what Ms. Selig is asking, what is our cost of occupancy going to be?
Yeah, what is the cost of it going to be, and when are we going to get it?
Yes, what's the COP lease payment going to be? What are the add-ons after that? The insurance, and on and on. But initially, you're going to have reserves, and, because you're going to have to do maintenance, and on and on. Are we going to have a full schedule, Mr. Danner?
Again, yes, you'll have a full schedule. Those will all be included as part of the cost of issuance. Afterwards, we would have, after the City Hall is constructed, if you proceed with the project, then we would simply, as part of the bond indenture, be required to purchase fire insurance, earthquake insurance, and we purchase that now on the current facility. I don't know what the premium is.
Oh, no, no. The point is, I think what Ms. Selig is asking, what is the cost of us to occupy a new City Hall facility going to be? Not just in COPs, but also in terms of insurance costs, reserves for ongoing maintenance, on and on and on. You're going to own this thing for 30 years, you're going to have to fix the roof, you're going to have to do a lot of other things. Isn't that right, Ms. Selig? Are you looking for the cost?
Well, that wasn't really part of my question right now, but it's a good question. I was just limiting my question to insurance. I've got a series of other things I want to ask, but that was just limiting-
Sure, go ahead.
...my question to insurance.
Before you leave, that, I mean, aren't we really looking at the incremental cost? I mean, we're already paying what we're paying on this building. We're buying fire insurance, we're doing maintenance, we're doing earthquake insurance and maybe flood insurance. So I guess if this is-
Yeah, we're talking about rental interruption insurance.
Well, but I'm saying, we're doing all those insurances. Obviously, on a new facility, a bigger facility, it's going to cost us some more money, and so really, it's the increment that we're, so it's not just what is the cost, but we also need to know what we're paying today to really assess what the new City Hall is going to cost us.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I guess my other question is, and I don't know who to ask this to, but I understand from talking to our staff that we're not going to do capitalized interest on this project for the period of time until the facility is completed, which is a, which is a common technique. And I guess I kind of got a two-part question. A, why aren't we putting capitalized interest in the bond issue? And then, B, how many, in your experience, and you're doing COPs on major facilities like this, how many jurisdictions elect to go ahead and fund the interest carry during the construction period, just out of their general fund revenues, as opposed to putting it into the bond issue?
I'm going to refer that to Robert.
There are different methods to not use capitalized interest. Capitalized interest is essentially borrowing the money to pay back to the investors, the interest component at least, for 18 months or two years. So it tends to be rather cost-effective, especially if you're going to have an insured transaction, if you're going to have a AAA-rated insured transaction. I would say probably 20, 25% of issues that I've worked on have, issuers have used capitalized interest for this type of financing.
So the majority don't use it?
Yeah.
They take it out of their regular operating funds?
Right, and there's numerous ways that that can be accomplished. You can use a separate asset to lease for the period of time, and then when the new facility's constructed, you can, we can swap assets.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Councilman Selig, we actually discussed that in quite some detail at one of our earlier finance meetings, finance team meetings, and that's certainly an option that we could, the council could direct, or we could select. I think our staff's feeling was that we have the ability to make these debt service payments, and we should begin them as soon as possible, as long as we get the legal opinion that we can, that the value of the land that we're occupying while the facility's being built, unless we do an asset swap, as you called it, that as long as the appraisal on the property is sufficient to make those capitalized lease interest payments, that we would choose to do so.
I think the thinking is that the sooner we tie up that money, then it is going to be used for other things. So if we're going to have the money, starting from day one, to make those payments, we would do that before it gets used for some other purpose.
I have a general question, and that is, do you have a timing schedule here? And maybe we have not, I don't think we've made the decision, obviously, but it goes to the underwriting issue. When do you borrow the money? Do you borrow the money now, in a project that is not defined without your permits, coastal or building permit? Or do you wait till you have your project ready to go, and then do you borrow? And what are the risks of doing it either way? There are, and there are risks doing it either way. One of the considerations that, or one of the charges that we had was to try and accomplish this as quickly as possible, and this was back in May. All right, let's start with that. Why would you, why would you want to borrow early? Well, because at that time, interest rates, and they've continued to stay at near historic lows, interest rates were very low. The Fed was, Alan Greenspan was raising the, the Fed rate every, every, every few months, it seems. So interest rates were rising on, at least on the short end. Interest rates were expected to rise by all the professionals over the course of this year. So you wanted to capture as low an interest rate as possible, because the interest component of a fifty million dollar project is, is extremely high. So, and in prudent judgment, you wanted to try and borrow the funds at the lowest possible interest cost. All right, it's today. What do you do now? You guys are the interest rate gurus out there. The, the environment's different. Well, in other words, give us, give us your best guess about where interest rates are going to go. Well, I will, I'll, I'll give you my two cents, and then I'll let Bill Huck provide you with his opinion. But, you know, speculating on interest rates, I can only be one, you know, thirty-three percent correct. Interest rates are either going to go up, they're going to stay the same, or they're going to go down. So, but typically with, with our municipal entities, we advise them, you're not in the business of predicting when interest rates are going to rise or fall. You're in the business of providing fundamental services to your residences. And we believe if you have a project that's ready to go, that's a fundamental, essential project, you should proceed as quickly as possible, in all due course, to get the project done. Then let me pose a question. This project will not be ready to go until you have building permits, which are kind of self-issued, and also a coastal permit as well. So when, as far as you underwriters, that part of this, when is it ready to go? Well, and we can, I will ask Bill to speak to this comment as well, but moving forward, we would like to have a fairly defined concept of what the project's going to be, and what the project, how much it's going to cost, simply because when we start making presentations to the rating agencies and the insurance companies, we're going to be asked that question. They're going to ask us how far along we are. And we need to give them fairly definitive answers within certain parameters. Well, for instance, how do you, how do you tell them when the coastal commission's going to issue a permit on a project that is, is in concept only, they have not, never seen at all? I mean, it could be three months, six months. How do you tell a rating agency back in New York how to get comfortable with that risk?
I think we can talk to coastal staff and, and get an indication of how long it's going to take. I mean, we're looking at replacing a city hall, we're looking at replacing a fire station, and adding parking, which the coastal commission is going to love. At the coastal commission, unless somebody locally makes it a controversy, at the coastal commission, this should be a very easy consent item for them.
Mr. Richard?
Yeah, Robert, and John, I do want to make one comment here. If we borrow the funds early, and we're well-defined, but without permit, those funds are invested by our investment advisors, and there's even an outside chance that we can make more money on a short-term basis than we're paying on the long-term basis. I don't, we don't like that. That's not what I'm suggesting.
Right.
But I want to make sure the citizens know, it's not like we're borrowing the funds and paying interest.
Right, that's correct.
We're earning interest at the same time.
You're earning interest at the same time to offset that. And typically, under the tax code, you have three years to spend the construction fund.
What would happen if the project, for whatever reason, couldn't go forward, and we did have the money?
And you did have the money? Well, we've discussed that at one of our meetings, and there will be an optional redemption feature in the certificate offering, so that if the project does not go forward for whatever reason, you can use the proceeds to, to call back the bonds, to buy back the certificates.
There was a cost for that?
There is a cost to that.
Well, how much of a cost? Is it a ten percent penalty for doing that?
No, oh, no, it's, it's.
Oh, I had to start somewhere, you get an answer.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was reflecting.
Oh, that's all right.
Well, there's two costs. To have a call feature that, where you can call bonds at any time, there's an interest rate cost as well. Because someone can have their certificates called virtually immediately, they're going to want a little bit higher interest rate than, than a certificate that doesn't have that call feature.
How much is a little higher?
I would say five basis points, possibly ten basis points.
And that's a callable on any, on any basis?
Where did Bill go? Okay.
Callable on any basis, or just when the project doesn't, is not built?
It could be called from what we call excess proceeds, so excess proceeds, meaning the construction funds left over. So it can be called at any time after the issue closes. But, but all your transaction costs, your costs are all up and smoked, right? Are all gone, yes.
Good. And what if we decided along the way, we wanted to make additional payments?
You could do that as well, under an additional rental schedule. You can prepay your lease payment, which will trigger a prepayment of the certificates.
And we would derive savings in the long run if we did that? Interest savings?
That's correct.
This is on bonds that have that call feature, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
This is on bonds that have the call feature.
Correct.
Otherwise, we'd be just accumulating in a bank account, which we wouldn't have a right to prepay ahead of time, would we?
I think, yes.
Okay. These features, you say the basis point is a hundredth of a one percent interest a year, right? Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just.
No, that's okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're, you're fine. I just don't do this all the time.
Yeah, three, five basis points would be a four fifty-five, four point five five percent.
So a point oh five percent, yeah. So five basis points is point oh five percent. Okay.
I have a question. I don't know if it's particularly the finance team, or our city attorney, or maybe someone on our staff would want to answer this, but is, is the C O P significantly different than, let's say we had a builder who came to us and said, "I'll build you a new city hall, I'll finance it myself, you just lease it for me for the next thirty years, and at the end of thirty years, I'll sell it to you for a dollar." I mean, is the, is that a significantly different transaction, without taking into account the, the tax free benefit, let's say? Just from a lease, I mean, isn't that what we're really doing? We have someone who's willing to pay to build a building for us?
That is essentially what you're doing.
So if we were to go find a building in town here, let's say, and approach the owner and say, "Well, we would like to lease our city hall instead of building our own, on our own property, and we want to pay you rent." I mean, basically, we're, for thirty years, and at the end of thirty years, you need to give us the building. It's basically the same thing, isn't it?
Yeah, you're substituting the, the builder contractor for the certificate purchaser.
Right. So really, we're not doing anything unusual with this C O P financing.
That's correct.
In a sense.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilman Diggle?
Yes, just wanted to thank Robert for the documents that he provided me with, the research on the negotiated versus the competitive issue. And I think it seems it's, it's similar to buying a house. We're going to have hundreds of pages of documents we have to comb through, and if the market pays five percent, then we're not going to pay ten percent. And if the mortgage broker or the underwriter wants three points, and other cities are paying two points, then we're going to negotiate to two points. So I think the kinds of information that's really helpful from the finance advisor is what other communities are doing. Because we, as council members, you know, we'll go to forums with other communities, and they'll say to us, "Look, this is what we did in our city." So I think that that type of research can be very helpful, because in a sense, that's the market for us as far as the cost of issuance. Thank you.
I think it's time for public comment. Are you done?
I just wanted, I felt like I didn't completely answer your question on the cost on the prepayment. There is the interest cost component, and then there may be a premium over and above to call the bonds, to call the certificates, and that's something that's typically negotiated with the investors through the investment banking firm. So typically, that's only about, about two percent of the principal amount that's prepaid. All right, and there's also your two percent transaction costs, generally, what's going to cost you to issue than begin with? Right. Just the transaction component. So let's say, it could be five percent, just to make it. Right, to make a nice round number. Right, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to open this up to the public. If you've been patient, come on up. Please let us know who you are. Great.
My name, my name is Alan Olson. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. Been here nineteen years, been enjoying the city for forty years. In the August twenty-fifth edition of the Daily Pilot, Mayor John Heffernan made a very proper request, I believe, that members of the community give input to the city council on the proposed city hall project. He was correct, I believe, that there exists in our community a silent majority who seldom express themselves on city issues. As a member of that usually silent group, I agree that we need to speak up more often, and I'm doing so.
Thank you.
We elect city councils, city council members, on the basis of their knowledge, their experience, and judgment. We see them, as you well know, study issues, get expert advice, such as this, and often meet until one o'clock in the morning, getting input from the community with incredible patience. We believe that they will make reasonable, considered decisions. We support those decisions, because by the time they make them, they are the best informed on the facts and the circumstances. We read in the paper about a very vocal minority, usually against things, asking for no votes and not wanting things to happen. They seem to often use scare tactics, rhetoric, and emotions, rather than facts and logic to try to persuade others. They often criticize council members. We of the more silent majority don't support their view. Newport Beach is a first-class, well-run city. We are financially sound. We can afford a proper, functional, adequate city hall. We deserve such a place for the staff to work. If you council members decide to build a new city hall, fire station, structure, then my message and our message is, go ahead and do it. We support your decision. We are the little less silent majority. Thank you.
Thank you. Be my press agent. That's fine. Please come up. Our public hearing is open. Please give us your ideas, comments.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman. My name is James Turner, 409 Bayside Drive. One statement first, Chairman Greenspan will increase the Fed fund rates next week, twenty-five basis points. And looking at this financing of Newport Beach, I can't believe these numbers, but it shows we are owing seventeen million, and we're paying three million a year in interest. Now, quick calculation comes up with about seventeen or eighteen percent. That can't possibly be right, but that's what I'm looking at. I'd like to get from the experts, and I am a retired stock and bond broker, what the difference in cost would be between a C O P and a general obligation bond of a thirty-year duration, both with triple A ratings, and with a five-year call feature. Can somebody give me a comparison in interest costs between those two types of instruments? Thank you.
Mr. Danner, you want to take the first point? Because that's internal to the city.
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer the first question Mr. Olson had. The three million ninety-three thousand three twenty-five approximate annual debt service payment includes principal and interest, so it's not strictly interest. It's a principal portion of the annual payment as well.
Well, and even though our outstanding debt is seventeen million, it was thirty million at one point, so that's the debt that we have paid down on some of those issues for a number of years.
Well, no, it goes back to my question when I asked you, what is the existing interest rate on these outstanding obligations? And you don't have them, I don't expect you to have, but that, but that's ultimately the question. Let's go to the second part of that question, Mr. Turner, and that is, what's the difference between a C O P with a five-year call and? Right, with a five-year call versus the general, Mr. Huck, maybe you can come up.
Bill Huck, I'm Stoney Youngberg. If it were five basis points, which is about right, it would be about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And I always have to move through this slowly, starting, moving the, the tens place over, but one percent of fifty million is five hundred thousand, a tenth of a percent would be fifty thousand, point oh five percent would be half of that, or about twenty-five thousand. That would be the high side. So I would say somewhere between fifteen thousand and twenty-five thousand dollars a year would be the interest cost differential between a bond that's a general obligation bond, which is insured, and a C O P, which is insured, each with a five-year call. So if, if that's the question, that would be my answer. It would depend a little bit on whether it's a thirty-year bond, or a ten-year bond, and some things like that, but it's, it's in that neighborhood.
Well, on, on what would be debt service, say, of three million dollars a year? I mean, twenty-five grand as comparison to three million. I mean, if you're paying two hundred fifty a month.
That's right, so if the basic cost is three million, then you're different by fifteen to twenty-five thousand.
Great, thank you. All right, public comment still open? Please come down. Mr. Hildreth, come on up.
Jim Hildreth, Newport Beach. City hall being rebuilt. Okay, there's a great deal of money being ventured into this, and bonds, and, well, these are certifications of participation that are being presented. I think that because of the city council being the ones that are voting on this, I think they should be excluded from purchasing any of these certificates.
I was going to buy them all myself. And I just want to let you know, I will, I'll take your heat, I'll take your warning, though.
Well, considering you paid a hundred dollars per campaign trash, I can understand how you can afford that. But I think there's a, a conflict of, of interest if the city council and/or any people that are, are associated with them buys any of these certificates, because of, certain city councils voting on this issue. As well as, I don't believe that city employees should be making money on the backs of the residents, so I think they should be excluded from it as well. So with that incentive gone away, will the city still be so gung-ho on rebuilding this, this location? As for the location of documents in the city, the documents should be put in a safe location. Granted, I'm unable to obtain certain documents that I've been asking for years, but I think that they should be in a location so that, well, as Katrina is, as an example, that they should be in such a location that is not susceptible to water damage, and this is a, a low-lying area, and we had a tsunami as well. So the record should be off-site, and with those criteria. The record should be off-site, and with those criteria, I would love to see what's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, Mr. Butoff.
Good, Mayor.
Good, come on up.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, staff, John Butoff, resident Newport Beach. I'd begin tonight just by saying it's awful hard to get a handle on the project costs. I downloaded the staff report this afternoon from the city's website. The project cost there was 43.4 million dollars. I came in tonight and saw the same staff report projected up on the PowerPoint presentation, but it had grown to 46.4 million dollars. I was at a council meeting two weeks ago where the council authorized the consultant to prepare plans based upon enhancements with a total cost of approximately 49.4 million dollars. And I see a number here on the page nine of Bond Consultants' Report, which indicates the amount of COPs is, well, it was 47, but now it's 50.7 million dollars. And I don't know what project cost that's based on. I don't know where these numbers are going to ultimately go, but I have to believe that the actual debt service on this is not going to be 3 million. It's probably going to be closer to 4 million. So, you know, let's be fair with that number. We saw a list of projects that have been financed in the Los Angeles, Orange County area over the last few years using COPs. Of those 25 projects, I think, city manager indicated that two of those were city halls, but the rest were water storage systems, distribution systems, water supply systems, school streets, mandatory essential city functions. That is not what we have here tonight. That's not what this city hall project is in this community. It is not a mandatory project. It is a fully 100% discretionary project for which there are well-recognized alternatives. The council has considered some of those alternatives, has at least told the public that it has considered some of those alternatives, but when the public has come in to ask to what extent alternative locations have been considered, to what extent outsourcing, relocation of certain functions to a different site have been considered, the answers have been superficial. And I think that may be an explanation for why you don't see so many members of the public here tonight. This is, you've certainly had a number of meetings where these issues have been addressed and given public opportunity to come in, but the members of the public that I am in contact with, and there are quite a number, have been frustrated by their inability to obtain meaningful information at these public forums. This project is not driven by community demand. I don't see any upwelling of public, community support for the new city hall project. It's driven by city staff and certain members of the city council. And I don't impute nefarious motives to any of the city staff. They're taking care of their own, which is what I would do under the same circumstances. But as a resident and a taxpayer, I would have to come in here to you and tell you that I think there's a great deal of public opposition to this and a great deal of public concern about it. It's a controversial project. It is certainly not something that the public uniformly supports, and we may very well get a chance to gauge that public support or lack thereof. I haven't heard one word tonight, it's mystifying to me, but not one word about the initiative that has been filed to require prior voter approval before the city can enter into any contract with an underwriter or any obligation via COPs to finance this project. Mystifying to me because it seems to me that that would have a substantial impact on whether this project goes forward. It certainly would be something that Bond Council or Disclosure Council would need to be disclosing right up front to the investors, it seems to me. And we haven't heard one word about it tonight from the council, from staff, from consultants, nobody. Why is that?
We'll have that answer before you leave.
Thank you. I hear constantly that this isn't a debt and that there's no tax, there's no new tax here, but there's no free lunch. It's going to come from existing general fund revenues. And I think it would be foolhardy for any of us, whether we're on the council or residents just voicing our opinions, to expect that the city's revenues will continue to grow at the rate they've grown over the last five or six years. We don't have another Newport Coast annexation coming down the pike. We're unlikely to see 20 and 30% annual increases in property values reflected in property tax payments. That's just not going to continue, and I think a fair-minded analysis would have to assume that there's going to be a decrease in the pace at which city revenues are increasing. Correspondingly, I think it would be a fair-minded assumption to say that the city's expenses are going to continue to rise. You've got a substantial portion of the city's budget that is payable to salaries, to pension liabilities, to medical liabilities for the employees of the city, and those are going to continue to rise. Do I have any more time? I've got a red thing flashing up.
There's a reason it's blinking. So how much time do you need? Go ahead.
Another minute. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Take a minute.
Where is that money going to come from? There is no free lunch here. Where's this 3, 4 million dollar annual payment going to come from? It's probably going to come from cuts in other areas. And where are those cuts going to come from? Is it going to be Ryan Channel cleanup? Is it going to be Back Bay dredging, Marina improvements? Is it going to be parks acquisition? Are there going to be fewer sports fields or not enough sports fields now for youth leagues? Is it going to be senior services? What's going to be cut? Because there's no free lunch. And to continually hear that there's not going to be a tax increase so there's no impact on the residents or the quality of life here, I think is misleading in the extreme. And I thank you for your courtesy in letting me talk over my time.
Glad to do it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is John Nelson, 110 Vialorca. I'm going to somewhat pair it with the first speaker said. I'm sure it won't be as eloquent, but generally speaking, the people that are opposed to the new city hall and the people that are behind the initiative to restrict your ability to fund this project would like you to believe that they are the voice of the people. They are who I refer to as the usual suspects. These people show up at the council meetings as self-appointed guardians of the residents, claiming to have some perceived mandate. They hold only to the same old mantra, which is oppose everything the city hall proposes, regardless of what benefits would be derived by the community. They do this in order to foster their own sense of self-importance and validate their own personal illusions of brander. In short, these people are grievance mongers, and in my opinion, would complain if given the keys to the gates of St. Peter's. They start unfounded rumors, they regurgitate misinformation, they distort the facts, and try to convince everyone that if it wasn't for them, the city council couldn't be trusted to think for themselves or to make a rational decision or implement proper city policy. Some of them have even run for city council and have been soundly rejected by the voters. This in itself speaks volumes. The voters have either directly or indirectly chosen the people on this council to manage the affairs of the city. They didn't elect the council members to this position just so they could be stripped of their ability to do the job they were elected to do. The grievance mongers didn't succeed at the ballot box, so now they're trying to do an end run around the will of the majority. I believe we live in a great city. I believe this council and preceding councils have done an excellent job in doing what is best for the citizens. This council should be allowed to continue its work without being hobbled by those who are long on opinion and short on knowledge. Now, we've heard these same people claim the new city hall is too costly. Well, let's put this in perspective. I've done some analysis on my own based on what I've read in the paper and heard here tonight. It appears that the cost to build a new city hall would be about 3.2 million dollars per year. This cost represents only about 2% of the city's current annual budget. This amount spread over the anticipated population of the city over the next 30 years would amount to about $3 per resident per month. The true cost is even less if one considers the effect that even a modest 2% inflation rate would have on the amount financed. In essence, inflation will reduce the true cost down to about $2.10 per resident per month. I'd pay more than that for a glass of beer at Sharkies.
That sounds good. What are you doing in Sharkies?
This doesn't take into consideration there'll be cost savings that the city will realize, such as efficiency of operations or reduced building maintenance cost, nor does it consider any cost of revenue the city hall could possibly generate to help offset this cost. Also, the city would be acquiring a real property asset that would increase the city's net worth. I know it's going to be 30 years down the road, but it's still going to be ours. And the city would have a city hall that meets current earthquake standards and ADA standards. You're not going to be sued by some handicap advocacy group that wants to force an issue. That in itself is going to save you guys money. The city needs a new home. I think it's long overdue and will be a huge benefit for everyone concerned. I urge the council to support this project and to use its wisdom and its best efforts to make this proposed city hall become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this? All right, I'm going to close the public comment. Two issues were raised of Mr. Butoff. One is the affordability question as to the city. That's going to be addressed next meeting, two weeks from tonight. We're going to open up the city finances, and staff is going to show you how they can support 250,000 a month, 3 million annual debt service, 4 million, whatever the final number this is going to be, not that we want it to be a higher number, but why that number is affordable. And we're going to look at revenue growth, expense growth, and pick apart the finances of the city to make our case on the other end. Why staff can assert that we can afford to be doing this at this time, and why we can be able to pay for it in the future. Second issue I would like to address, the COP initiative has been, it's valid at this point. It's subject to getting signatures, as I understand, a city attorney, is that right?
Yes, the initiative petition has been submitted to the city clerk. The title and ballot summary has been submitted back to the initiative opponents, and that's all that's happened. The reason why it hasn't been discussed here tonight is because it wasn't agendized for the discussion. The agenda for the discussion tonight was the COPs, and Dave McKean can address what he will be doing with regards to reviewing that initiative and the impact it might have on the COPs.
Right, and I think it's a fair question from the proponents of that initiative to say, okay, we put it on the table, we hope to validate it with enough signatures so it'll go to a vote. That is, being that as it may, how do you disclose this to the underwriters? What effect does this have on this potential COP issuance?
Well, for certain, we will have to disclose that as long as it's pending and not withdrawn. That will be a disclosable issue. We have to complete our own analysis of the impact that the initiative would have on this proposed financing, and unless we can get very comfortable about moving forward with it pending, we wouldn't move forward. Unless I can guarantee you that I can give you an absolute clean opinion that it is not qualified in any way by circumstances that might occur in the future, then we would not be able to proceed. But that's an analysis that we're undergoing right now. I would anticipate probably being through that analysis in the next couple of weeks and working closely with the city attorney to address those issues.
Well, I think to more broadly disclose the issue, the issue is that that initiative, as I understand it, seeks voter approval for issuance of COPs by the city, not just from the date it might be voted on, which would be either next June or next November, but retroactively to the date the initiative was filed, which would mean that if it was certified for an election whichever date, and it was approved, then it would supposedly have retroactive effect to now.
To the date it was filed.
To the date, which is now, which is before we would go out with these COPs.
That's correct.
So the question would be, would that initiative invalidate COPs that were issued, say, in December? That is the specific question that you're going to be doing research on?
That's correct.
Good. Any other input from council on that issue? Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah, I know we're going to talk in a couple of weeks about our ability to make payments. I just want to say that, and Mr. Nelson said it correctly, we deal with knowledge. And I've been here seven years. Dennis, help me out for one second. What is our current property tax receipts for the city of Newport Beach for this current budget year?
Secure property taxes is roughly 40 million.
Okay. When I started seven years ago, it was 28.7 million dollars. And ironically, at that same period of time, our TOT, Transit Occupancy Tax, was around seven. It kind of went up to eight and a half, and it stagnated at eight and a half. We're looking at the Newport Coast having a new hotel of 200 rooms. We're also looking at about 1,500 rooms at the Marriott, I mean, the, yeah, Marriott Suites down there. And we're looking at TOT revenues. They finally have recovered from the 9/11, which was four years ago. We, the Newport Beach Marriott in Fashion Island is spending 50 million dollars on that structure, and the Hyatt Newporter is spending money. There's a new takeover of a hotel up at the airport. What I'm saying to you is, we're looking at TOT revenue probably increasing here in the next two to three years, probably, I think substantially. It will not stagnate and continue to stagnate at its current eight and a half. It probably will ratchet up to, you know, 11, 12 million dollars per year. We're having a new car dealership with the groundbreaking tomorrow, and we're looking at, I guess I don't, you know, the one car dealership, which is a flagship store of Mercedes-Benz, contributes about 3.5 million, I think, in sales tax to us. And quite candidly, in the long term, we're looking at that for Lexus. So those are just the initial responses I bring to you for future. And the last one, and the most important one, we have had building permits valuation for the last 10 years on average at over 200 million dollars a year. And we're on, we just closed the '04-'05 on June 30th, and we're already ahead this year from last year. The remodeling, rebuilding, and new construction that occurs in this city continues at its pace, and it has maintained that pace. We had one year where we were at 300 million dollars. So we, as a council, have benefit of that. We try to communicate it to our citizens, and I know it will be communicated perhaps in a more static model in a couple of weeks. I'm giving you the dynamic model that we, as a council, are looking at in future revenues for this city. And everything we're talking about is not, it doesn't add any impact to our infrastructure or our system. These are just new dollars, and those new dollars will continue to grow. And I don't see, I don't know where Mr. Butoff got his crystal ball, but I got to tell you, my crystal ball is a little bit different. I think future property values in this city will continue to go upward, and the citizens demand that, and quite candidly, they deserve a new city hall to support that quality of life that they expect here. I spent a whole day last Friday visiting other cities and looking at their beautiful, technologically improved chambers. Candidly, this is an embarrassment for a city of this wealth and this stature, and we deserve it.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. Selig next.
Yeah, I have a question for someone on the finance team, I don't know who. If this project is approved on a less-than-unanimous vote, does that affect the marketability or the interest rates of the securities? or the interest rates of the securities?
Bill Huck of Stony Youngberg. It depends. A 6-1 vote doesn't change it. A 5-2 vote doesn't change it. A 4-3 vote. It's hard to say. I mean, if the COPs still get a policy of bond insurance, I wouldn't even think that that would change it. But it's, any investor, any lender wants to see a strong consensus that this is the right project at the right time, and people are behind it. And so the things that are said, and we're a lender, and so we very much appreciate the opportunity to listen in on your deliberations and hear the comments of your community in this council about the investment that you're considering to make to your community. So the tone of any expression of leadership is very important to investors.
Councilman DeGel?
Well, being one of the newer members on the city council, I think probably one of the reasons we haven't gotten all excited about the initiative is that it seems to be coming clear to me that certain people will oppose us no matter what we do, whether it's a library or a senior center, a city hall. We had to construct a levee that opposed us on that as well. So I think that's part of it, and they are perhaps a little disappointed they haven't gotten more of a reaction from us at this point.
All right. My general observation is I've asked in the newspaper, I've asked in newsletters, I've asked, create a separate website of people that oppose this project, and here's a very critical COP issuance where we have initiative outstanding, and we have four public speakers. We had three public speakers when we presented the City Hall project. If people are upset about this project, are upset at what we're doing, then I don't know what form you're going to use, because we're marching along as if we're doing our due diligence and our public outreach, but I'm getting no feedback from the public, and neither, and limited if any in the Daily Pilot or any other means of writing in, of what you folks think. If you're opposed, it's time to step up. Don't be sitting in the trenches and be ready to lob something at us. This input is very important to us, and I'm not seeing it. Whether 15,000 people sign that initiative, that's another story. But as far as a meaningful input that we need now in our deliberation, city council, I'm just not seeing it. And I wish that you would avail yourselves to these means. The next meeting is critically important. We're going to show you how we can afford it. And I'm speaking for somebody who voted against this project twice. I'm not the easy sell here. I ran on the green light ticket, who supported the initiative. So you're not talking to somebody who's trying to, you know, throw some boilerplate at you. I'm trying to get this thing fairly assessed by our residents, and I'm not here, and the opposition is supposed to be there, or on the other hand, people that are in favor of it either. I think the people in favor have delegated the job to us, the city council, to make the decision. People that oppose it, I want to hear from you. And the sooner the better, and we all do. Because I'm just not speaking for myself. The rest of the council deserves your input. Any other comments here?
I think that we also would like to hear from the people that support it, too.
No, definitely. We want to hear from, we just need input, and we're not getting much.
I'm sorry. I just make, Mr. Olson was very eloquent in his speaking, talked about what I see as representative government and giving the confidence to us as the elected officials, and that is truly appreciated. I don't, you know, we don't have the luxury of trying to second guess the why people oppose this. The word was used, and I think appropriately, that staff doesn't have any nefarious intentions on this project, and I just wish I could understand the, what I think is vocal, but and minor opposition. It's just very difficult for me. I've been around this City Hall for years now, and again, in my business, I visit a lot of other city halls, and I think this is a gift to the citizens of this community. And I, I'd love to sit with the opposition and understand. And if it's strictly a vote issue, I think Mr. Olson said it tonight. You know, we're not hearing the opposition. I don't run in the same circles, but I think most of the citizens are very clearly supportive of representative government and that vocal minority out there. So silent vocal minority, or silent minority, who really, or majority, I'm sorry. I'm tired. I, thank you guys. Anyhow, you know, there are other cities, again, I visited them, and I'm going to be doing it again on the 20th, that they have standing ovation and standing room only of the citizens who are supportive of new city halls. We're a polarized city. I don't want to get off on politics, but I just don't understand it quite candidly, and I'm very supportive of this project, obviously.
Any other comment here? Okay. Homer, what's the action? What do you need from us?
We don't need any action.
Don't need any action from you. We appreciate your comments and appreciate your questions and appreciate the opportunity to share some very basic factual information.
I have a last question. In two weeks from now, we have the city side. Is any of this finance team going to be here? If questions, you know, unfold that relate to that side?
Well, I guess I wasn't thinking about doing that, because it seemed to me like the question that was posed was really a staff question, and that is, show us our ability to pay. And we understand our own ability to pay and where our revenues come from better than ours.
No, I'm not so concerned about that, because we're talking about financing. We may get the ask-for crowd who start asking very specific bond questions or underwriting questions. We won't have the people here to answer it. I think it's appropriate that they, somebody be here that can, with some general knowledge, that could respond to questions which may or may not come about.
I think I could speak for the finance team that anybody would be here that you requested, but I know, although I haven't asked him, I know Robert Poor will be here, because he's been at every meeting so far.
That's fine. I'm just using this as a suggestion, so we have the full team here. We don't have, we don't have missing pieces.
Bring your pajamas and toothbrush.
Okay. All right, then, we'll conclude this item. What's the council's disposition? Take a break? It's 10:05.
Take a break.
Take a break? How much do we have left, city clerk?
A lot. Got probably seven or eight items left.
Seven or eight items left? Do you suggest we take a break, city clerk?
Just please.
Yes, thank you.
How long a break, Mr. Mayor?
Ten minutes.
All right, lights go on in about ten minutes. City Clerk, everyone here? Can you start again?
The record will show that Councilmember Dagel is excused.
Okay, good. We'll come back to order. City Clerk?
Item number thirteen, resolution authorizing the city manager to reject documents relating to the transfer of Adelphia's franchise to either Time Warner or Comcast.
Mr. Kiff, are you giving the report?
This is authorization to allow me to do whatever I want to do whenever I want to do it, so...
So that may be how it starts, but it's not going to end that way.
I should have made a consent calendar item. No, Dave, I'm a little giddy after the break. Dave Kiff is going to give us serious...
What was your line? "I come before you to stand behind you to tell you something I know nothing about."
Dave, with that introduction, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This is a resolution that's been requested by our special counsel on cable communications issues, and that's Bill Marticarina with Ratan and Tucker. And as the folks at home may know, our half of our, actually two-thirds of our cable system, Adelphia, has been proposed to be transferred to a subsidiary of Time Warner. And Bill Marticarina represents our city and about twenty others and has been managing the transfer for us. And he has asked your council to delegate authority to reject the transfer in the, what we expect will be a rare event, that he cannot get enough data from this new subsidiary of Time Warner to make a finding to us that it's an appropriate transfer to make. So we have until October tenth to potentially reject this transfer because we were notified on June tenth from the cable company that the transfer would occur, and there's a hundred and twenty day timeline. So we are asking you to consider and approve this resolution delegating that authority in the event that we can't come back to the full council with a recommendation that the transfer be rejected. We don't expect that to happen.
Who are we delegating that to, Dave?
You're delegating that authority to the city manager or his designee, which would potentially, Homer would probably handle that from that point.
Okay, but he will take direction from us before he does anything else, assuming we approve that.
Well, actually, we're asking that we be allowed to consult with the telecom committee before we actually rejected a transfer. We wouldn't come back to council necessarily because that's the purpose of the resolution. If we have to act fast, we would be able to act fast.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Webb?
I move the recommended action.
Second.
Have the question, if I could. Before, when we were talking about telecommunications, when we, you know, stepped down and put our foot down, we found out very shortly thereafter by the same council that we didn't have a foot that we could stand on. I mean, basically that this is out of our realm, so to speak. And I'm saying, are we, is this a token just, well, I can't say that because that would undermine our position. But basically, do we have something that we can stand on? We have a fact that Adelphia's cable franchise is much less used than Cox. And at one time Cox owned the whole thing. I guess we're better off if Cox would own the whole thing again. But are we, in other words, based on the fact that the Adelphia usage is far smaller on a percentage basis of customers served than is Cox, can we, do we have some grounds to stand on that this should not be transferred to Time Warner if Adelphia wants to do that?
We always, we always have grounds to reject, we always have grounds to reject a potential transfer in the event that the company requesting the transfer doesn't provide us with enough documents that we feel comfortable that they can adequately serve the customer base. And looks like Robin would like to chime in, so...
Yeah, I'd just like to highlight that the situation here is that there's an application, a form that's been filed to transfer from Adelphia to Time Warner. The problem that our council is having is that when we requested information or an analysis of that application, it's very difficult to find out exactly who's going to be holding that franchise, who it's actually going to ultimately be transferred to, because Time Warner is planning on creating a spinoff of Time Warner of New York, Inc., and maybe some other subsidiary. And there's, I guess, two different applications. And these are new corporations, and we don't even know how they're made up, what their financial capabilities are. And so we've been trying to get information from them, and that's been difficult. And there's also been some negotiations to try and get an extension of the time period to reject this application until we can get more information and negotiate some sort of a, of an agreement for confidentiality for providing that information. So that's kind of what Bill Marticarina's working for and trying to get the information. And by granting this resolution, all we're doing is giving a little bit more time to Time Warner to get the information to us so that we don't have to reject it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I second the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Rosensky, second.
I'm sorry, I was asleep.
I am pro on this. I want to point out for a change. So I'm not negative, but I would also like to point out that we're one of the few cities, I sit on this committee, so gee whiz, I actually went to them all. We're one of the few cities that does not have a single cable company representing us. And when you have a single cable company representing you, you have some place to go to bargain, whereas we're getting whipsawed with Adelphia and Cox. And so if this would help our position there, which I do think it would, I'm for this. I would like to, if we can get to a single company, regardless of who it is, I think we're going to be better off than if we're half and half. But I would point out, again, by their own figures, that they show only fifty-five percent of Adelphia's people are signed up for cable and seventy-three percent are Cox's. So it, we, from our standpoint, would like more people on the cable able to use our own services. So I think it, I am for it. I...
Okay, good. Let's...
I'll second your motion if it isn't already seconded.
Well, wait a minute. No, because...
Mr. Selig, why don't you weigh in on this?
Well, no, I just got a, I just got a question on the thing. What is the effect of us rejecting it? Does that mean the application transfer doesn't take place and they have to come to us to actually get the application? Or is it just an objection that gets raised among other potential rejections?
I know that it does allow them to reapply for a new, for, they can make a new application and just...
For a transfer. But our say is final then, if we decide to reject. I'm just trying to figure if we really have a hammer over these guys or not.
This is the one time where you do have a light hammer over them, yes. They can come back with additional documents and enough to convince, I think, special counsel that the transfer is appropriate. But this, this at least makes them go through the exercise of providing more documents than they provided today.
They're just not providing them because they haven't decided which subsidiary they're going to want to throw us into.
That's correct.
And it could be multiple, multiple groups. In other words, if Time Warner brought up two groups, we could have three in this city instead of one. And we're suffering because of that.
Any other comment? Public comment. Come on up.
Jim Hildreth, Newport Beach. In actuality, the people that used to be filming the city council meetings was Comcast. I hate to tell you this, but Adelphia is filming us right now. And the, I think they do a really good job. So not to lambast these guys, but I didn't know where these guys are going to go. These are your crew. These are the people that are filming the city council. They've been doing this for a long period of time. I think we ought to take consideration of these individuals that are doing the service.
Why don't you hire them, let them work for you? We'll start with that.
I keep you under surveillance? Hmm, possible.
Little to watch. It's fine.
Anyway, the, it says either Time Warner or Comcast. Well, Cox is, is the other location down here. And so maybe you ought to extend this over to also Cox as well, instead of just Comcast, Time Warner Comcast. So I hate to see you guys talk to these individuals in third person because they're actually filming, you know, and they're doing a pretty good darn good job. Adelphia, I don't think that you should be just picking on them just because they've had a bad time with the owners of the company. If Adelphia is going under, then maybe they want to abandon ship and be under a different, different ownership. So taking on a new boss. Anyway, as for this, it says delegate the city manager. I think the city council should have a say on this because the city council is the ones that are being filmed over this. And I think that they're the ones that should actually have a say in what's going on. So thank you.
Good. Anybody else to speak to this? Let's vote.
Motion carries.
City Clerk?
Item number fourteen, council policy manual update for 2005 and public meeting to consider city statement of investment policy.
Is anyone going to give the report on this? Mr. Kiff?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, you see this staff report every year. It updates our council policy manual with things that we think are generally non-controversial, but certainly you're welcome to read them and comment on them. And secondly, it fulfills a state requirement that you, as a council, reaffirm the city's financial investment policy at least once a year. So with this one action, you achieve both of those goals. I do need to make one correction. I think Councilman Selig caught this in some research, that we've already deleted B3, so it can't be deleted twice. B5, excuse me.
Any questions? Nichols?
There's two parts on this, and one, and we're only really considering the investment part, I guess. Is it possible that we could bring back this policy review and just understand those statements or maybe look at them a little deeper? I haven't been able to review them. I didn't catch it until it was pretty late, but...
Are we reviewing broader provisions?
We're reviewing all council policies.
That's right.
This isn't limited to investment. This is a number...
Well, the original, if you read your blue sheet, it is, talks about just investment policy. But then when you read the agenda item, it's a policy, all policies are open to review, as well as the investment policy. And I'm, and I'm saying I think it would be worthwhile having our citizens understand what our policies are in these other areas with regard to Oasis and some of the other...
Mr. Nichols, our policy manual is rather thick, and it's on the website. And if people really want to know what all the policies are, they can look at them. But I think...
But unless you take a specific, can bring it up on a specific item, once a year it's required to review this, I'm saying it would be nice to have a little more thorough review than just having them published in a manual which is not properly titled on our item because it doesn't address that. But this says that basically all these policies should be addressed and basically passed on, that we reviewed them. And I'm just saying that I think it would be worthwhile possibly reviewing these or having a shot at it.
Excuse me, are you suggesting, pick up the purple manual there, Dave, or Robin. Are you suggesting that we go through every policy in that manual, one by one, and discuss it so that the general public can offer comments?
That one right there, Dave.
I understand that the policy, are the policies that we're supposed, are summaries of that, or are they the every single detailed?
That book right there has all of the city policies that we have adopted.
And are they not addressed here too? A part fee policy, so far that we have modified?
Only those that are being changed.
Councilmember, if it's any help, we did try a couple of years ago, I think maybe at another council member's request, to summarize in a tight way what the policies are that we're changing and what the change is. And that's in your attachment A. So all the policies that have no comment next to them as to what it says currently and the proposed change are not being proposed for change at all. The only ones that are being proposed for change are the ones where we have comments there. And we try to be pretty succinct in saying this is changing two words or three words or a reference to a director's name or something like that.
Well, could, I would like the opportunity to go through those a little bit more, is my question.
Mr. Mayor, I would actually oppose that. If you want to go through them, I'd suggest we continue this. You go through them with the city staff and review them and then bring up your comments.
That would be fine.
Okay, then you want to make a motion to continue?
Well, I, yes, if we could, I would like to continue just the, we can, as far as the investment side of it, which was part two of this, as I understand it, I affirm the investment policy. I feel that that's appropriate. But I would like the opportunity to just look at the...
Let's bring it all back. Bring the whole thing back.
But go talk to staff in the meantime.
I will talk to staff in the meantime.
This has been continued for about, I can't remember, it was about a month ago. So you have had an entire month to go to the staff and ask your questions about this. And to wait at this time and ask for more clarification doesn't make sense to me. And I personally would oppose the continuance and move that we adopt the recommended action.
All right, well, he's made a motion. Do we have a second here on that motion? All right, we don't get a second. Phil's, Phil's for lack of a second to continue it. All right, is there another motion?
I move that we adopt the recommended action.
Well, I have a question on one of the other policies.
No, no, I mean, let's, we have a second to this motion to approve?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, all right. Mr. Rosanski, go ready.
On policy L2, driveway approaches, we have this new language in here. Come on, it's public works. He's ducking and chucking. Well, you've added this section C, three and four. Basically, what it's saying on corner lots, that we're now going to allow curb cuts on the side street where there's alley access. Is that... Is that what that's saying? Then on number four, it says the street curb cut will not be allowed to provide access to any of the required spaces. So, what does that mean? Handwritten eighty-one.
Handwritten what?
Page eighty-one.
Page eighty-one, handwritten eighty-one.
I guess, Mayor, Miss, members of council, I'm a little bit surprised at that one myself because I was aware of the C3, but the C, I think the intent of that is not to allow someone to have an additional curb cut just to make up the required spaces for, say, like a duplex. So, if you're building a duplex in an area where, I guess, you're one and a half or two spaces per unit, that you would have to make up your required spaces in a traditional way as accessed off an alley, and you would only be allowed, you would only be allowed to have that cut on the side street if you were providing additional spaces above and beyond the required spaces. I think that's the intent.
But you're not sure.
Well, it doesn't read that. It's hard.
Let's fix it right now.
But item three, as I understand it, is one where the existing policy of L2 says you would not allow curb cuts on the street unless you're providing additional parking spaces. This change here in three addresses the concern that we had, I think the last time we considered an encroachment policy, and that was that the particular owner wanted to, in effect, almost divide the lot in half to where he could have the front half facing, on the street, have his parking places adjacent to that unit, and the back half would be served from the alley. And we, I think, told the staff that we thought that was a good idea, and they should go through, and this kind of response to that.
I voted against that. I thought it was a bad idea.
Yeah, something like that. In this particular one, it would say that, yeah, you can have an additional curb cut without doing number three if you're providing extra spaces.
But that's hard to do.
Providing extra spaces, then you would still have to have the four spaces off the alley.
Can we approve this whole thing except for L2 and have L2 brought back?
Sure.
Then let's make that motion. I'm going to make a substitute motion. Have we approved?
Second.
Okay, except for L2, and we'll bring that, we'll continue that. Okay, this is second.
All right. Mr. Selig, do you want to weigh in on this since you've been quiet? No? All right. Public comment. Pass. Mr. Nichols, go ahead.
I think there may be other aspects of this, and I would like the opportunity to read them through.
Well, you're supposed to read them before you come in, Mr. Nichols.
Yes, I understand, in some strange way. But reading the title and then reading this regarding investment policy, I found it had the other aspects, and I haven't had the chance to go through it. We have seventy-five corner lot curb cuts in Corona del Mar, and that's why we approved the other one. It was the same as all the others.
We're not approving that.
No, I'm not saying you are approving it. I'm saying that was the basis for what we were allowing before, and it made a lot of sense.
Mr. Mayor, I might suggest, since you're going to bring L2 back, that maybe we could go ahead and approve, the council could go ahead and approve the items. Councilmember Nichols could meet with staff on any issues after he's read them through that he might have, and if there's any suggested changes that he might want, then staff could bring those back with L2.
Good, good little position. Okay? Let's call for the vote.
Motion carries.
City clerk?
Item number fifteen, acceptance of irrevocable offer of dedication Newport Ridge Park.
Is that Mr. Kiff?
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a staff report with a fairly simple recommended action, and it describes, just for your information, some of the issues associated with Newport Ridge Park and its irrevocable offer of dedication, and the city attorney worked on this, and mostly I worked on it a little bit, but I did want to let you know that the recommended action is to direct the Newport Coast Advisory Committee to start to work on the open space goals, and as Mayor Heffernan reported earlier, they are doing that. So, I may stop there with my comments. If Robin has anything to add, you may just want this for your information.
I hope I gave a pretty thorough description in my staff report, so unless the council has any questions, I'll leave it as it's written.
Well, the staff report is really, it's almost informational. It's not calling for an action tonight, I don't think, is it?
The only act, no, it's not calling for an action on the part of the council, that's correct.
Okay, and the very first issue, you know, is the community-centered land, and so I can voice my opinion right now, I would certainly urge that we move forward with including the baseball fields next to the community center as part of the irrevocable offer to dedicate, that we take that, and, I mean, go further, instead of doing a leaseback to the Newport Ridge Association, we try to figure a way to do a fee ownership by us of the community center baseball fields and likewise split off or lot line, and instead of leasing back to the Newport Ridge Association, we give that, or we deed that to them in fee. Did I confuse you with that?
Well, maybe, maybe.
Because right now, the way this.
From your question, it tells me that maybe I should go through my report.
Well.
Because they already own it in free.
Well.
Subject to our irrevocable offer of dedication. So, if we do not accept.
But if we take it back, then we lease it back.
Correct. If we don't, if we don't accept it.
She's saying to just accept as to the pieces we want.
That we want, and then they will own the rest in fee, and we won't have to give it back to them.
Okay, that's fine. Then that's fine. I just want to encourage that to happen.
I strongly agree with Councilman Ridgeway on this item because I think that a public park serves all the developments in a city, and the reason why we have park dedication requirements in every subdivision development is because we need to have those park spaces for more than just that one community. They need to be shared, and I agree that the baseball fields should be a public park area because it's meeting the public park needs of this private community.
Well, that's actually what was envisioned by the offer of dedication.
But that's different than what Mr. Ridgeway conveyed.
No.
No, I, the only missing link there was the fact that the Irvine Company has already conveyed to Newport Ridge Home Owners Association the fee interest. So, but we have the right to.
I don't think we automatically have a right to turn that around.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do.
Well, we do, but they have then the last right to have it put back to them under a lease. So, it's their option to take the baseball fields ultimately, whether they own it now or not, or anything else. They have the right, like with all that area in that Newport Ridge Park, except for the community center.
The right is by the city council's approval of the pre-annexation agreement, that the city would lease it back for a dollar a year.
So, we can't have the ball fields, though, unless the NCAC or whoever that is going to look at this says you can have the ball fields, keep the ball fields.
That's correct, in my understanding.
That's the reason why the recommended action for the council tonight is to have them go back and look at these issues.
But it's not at our option, unfortunately.
It's not at our option if they don't agree to it, we would have to deal with.
They say we want the ball fields to stay with Newport Ridge homeowners association, then it stays with them.
Well, if they said that they wanted to keep them, then the city would be obligated to lease it back to them for, within the parameters of the PAA and then any other leasing provisions that we would.
Well, I also support us taking the ball fields. I hope the NCAC sees it that way, and I will move the action.
Whatever action there is, I will second. I think it's more of a just direction.
I think the action is that they, we direct, I'm just saying the recommendation is that we ask the Newport Coast Association.
Which we have.
Which we have, to consider the policies of how they want to treat their parks. And basically, that's the action in this, which is somewhat different than what you're saying, Mr. Ridgeway, so I.
Okay, I'll accept that. So, can we call for the vote?
No, we have the public comment. Okay, waived, public comment's closed. Let's have the vote. Thank you.
Motion carries.
City clerk?
Item number sixteen, designation of voting delegate for 2005 League Annual Conference, October sixth through eighth in San Francisco.
Who's going?
Councilmember Dagel.
I move we designate Councilmember Dagel.
Yeah, I second that.
Second.
You're sure she's going? Oh, good.
Okay, and what other, what other report, any? Okay, then let's, is there a motion of that effect?
An alternate?
Yeah, Dagel, Dagel. There is no alternate.
Okay, I'm going to bring this up out to the public. Okay? Bring it back and let's vote.
That gives a new definition to waive.
Motion carries.
If I didn't vote, I pushed my.
Yeah, you did.
City clerk?
Item number eighteen is a council consideration of providing disaster support for the Hurricane Katrina relief effort.
City manager?
Several council people said, what are we going to be doing, if anything, as far as the relief effort? So, I thought I would put it on the city council because that really isn't a staff decision. It has been a staff decision as far as being able to send two two-man fire teams that are rescue teams, and that has already been done, but if city council wants to talk about any other ways of assisting in the disaster relief effort, this would be your opportunity. I would say that I did talk to staff and query them about having people deliver some supplies and goods at city hall, and I think the consensus of that was that it would be very difficult. I mean, some people would bring in, you know, used shoes or used clothing, and that isn't what is being accepted, and rather than put staff in the position of saying, of policing what people are bringing in, I think it would be a lot easier if city council wants to be willing to accept donations and that we will get them to whatever agency you would so designate, but that we, in terms of accepting goods, that we limit our acceptance to money that we would give in the city's name.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Gloudow, is this a proper, going to the American Red Cross, let's use that as a focal point, for each councilman, or as my councilman stipend, my yearly district funds, can I give a portion of that to this, to the American Red Cross for use in New Orleans and Mississippi?
Well, I think you could. I mean, we're just about three months into the fiscal year, so, you know, depending upon how you would foresee the use for the rest of the other nine months of the fiscal year, I think if there is a consensus on the part of city council that you want to do something, that maybe you would do it as a city council rather than individuals.
Yeah, I would say that we, as a city, should just step up and make a donation, and I don't, I know there's a question as to where or who we're going to give the money to, and, you know, Conference and Visitors Bureau sent some money, I think, towards the way of the Conference and Visitors Bureau in New Orleans, and so instead of just kind of throwing it into the general fund, I'd almost like to target it directly, maybe to the cities of New Orleans and maybe Biloxi, which were probably two of the hardest hit cities, and see if there's a way to direct it more specifically as opposed to just the Red Cross, or.
Did you want to have staff evaluate that in terms of both dollars and direction, and bring it back at the next meeting, because this is going to be going on for years?
Yeah, well, either that or I'd set a dollar amount of at least ten thousand to each city tonight.
Then we have to find funds for that. Do you want to have the next meeting to bring?
No, I think if you authorize, you know, ten thousand dollars being spent from unappropriated revenues, I think that would be the way to do it, and you could do that.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion. And let me say, I'm on the San District Board. We sent, I believe, five sanitation district employees down there because of the severity of their problems, and that was unanimously approved. Obviously, it's, they're down there for, I think, eight days, but they're in desperate need for that kind of help.
Was it the intent of the council, then, the five thousand for each of the cities?
No, ten thousand for each city.
Biloxi and.
And New Orleans.
New Orleans, yeah. And it would go to their city hall, or would it go?
I'll leave that up to maybe staff as to exactly how, I mean, I know money comes into our city and it's presented to us for various things. I don't know what their mechanism would be there.
The private sector seems to be doing better than the public sector down there in actually serving individuals. I prefer the Salvation Army myself, but that's, I believe that they, they were, as was all of us, we were told that we should not do anything initially, is remember the First Pima statement, and then they reversed themselves and said, no, we need aid. I don't know that the federal government is, has operated in a super way, is all I'm saying, and I do believe the private individuals and those organizations that are from the private sector have done better. I do not favor the Red Cross.
Okay, well, and that's fine. Can I suggest, we've designated a dollar amount, I'm sure we're going to approve it, and perhaps you could communicate to us by email with each one of us responding to you as to where you intend to give those monies. I think that you're in a better position to do the research from a public entity point of view, and I hate to delegate to you some new work, but I think it will be easy to identify somebody that will put effective use to these funds, much more so than perhaps an agency that will take a little bit of a percentage.
Right. I'd much rather see it as a city-to-city initiative as opposed to just throwing it into the general.
The problem there is, is particularly New Orleans, the city was particularly bad, and in fact, they have a heck of a problem. I mean, for example, they have a requirement that only police officers from the city are eligible to be hired as city employees, and so they have quite a few ex-convicts on the police staff for no other reason than that's the only people applying. So, that particular city, in some extent, as far as city government, is lacking to a high degree. I'm not, I'm not looking to particularly say that there's nothing going on that hasn't, I mean, that it hasn't worked that way down there. They held up some of the other aspects.
I'll stick with my motion as stated, but I guess if you want an alternative motion, then you'd have to make that.
I'll second that.
Okay, city attorney, do you have any comment on this? No comment? Good. Any public comment? Come on up. Shiller?
Thank you very much. Jim Hildreth, Newport Beach. If this is a city council-only donation, then I think it should be symbolic for them to make it to the other city councils. I think that's probably the way in which it should lie, to help them reestablish their city council to help because of this city council. It's a donation from a city council, and I think that it would be a symbolic gesture to assure that other city councils that have been destroyed will be rebuilt to help them do their business. The other is why the general public hasn't been offered into this to aid the city council in their venture to help other cities. So, this is only from the city council, as far as I see. I don't understand the reason why it wasn't opened up to the general public, so to help with this as a tax write-off for the general public to help out other cities as a kind gesture, as well as. So, as for the best way in which to handle their, the finances, well, if you're dealing with the city council, I think the city. with the city council, I think the city council's the best way to, to handle their own money and how to rebuild their own city council. So as for the other locations, there are many people that are venturing into giving donations to a variety of different individuals, so, such as Red Cross and such as FEMA and such as everybody else is donating money. But I don't, I, this is the first time I've ever heard of a city council actually donating money to another city for their own city council, which I think is a pretty good gesture. Thank you.
Okay, any other comment? Nope? Okay, let's vote.
I didn't press this, Levon. I'd like to do another one.
Just change it.
Just push, push, push the other button.
With Councilmember Nichols abstaining, the motion carries.
City clerk.
Items removed from the consent calendar is item number one, the minutes.
Schiller, I think you pulled that one.
Thank you very much, Jim Hildreth. There we go, green light. Boy, these, these, city council's been working overtime to have so many council meetings, so maybe it's the reason why they're being kind of shortened as to what people say. However, it needs to be revamped. Here's an example. I'm just going to use some examples because it is getting late and you guys want to go home and do whatever you do. This is volume five seven, page three ninety-two, roughly the middle of the page. Wait, 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 no, I don't want that. Public comments, that's the one I want, the very bottom of the page. Same page, very bottom. The Doris Odin asked questions regarding public hearing process. Well, she actually said that the city council had an obligation to answer the questions. The next sentence thereafter is just that I, Jim Hildreth, discussed papers he presented, previously presented to the city council and access to the Grand Canal. Well, there's a lot more things that I said. In fact, I made mention about competency of, of a public works director. However, there was a process of answering that question and never came to, to fruition. So the amount of information that is being presented in these documents is not going to be truthful, and I don't, I don't see how these can be entered into any type of litigation whatsoever. If this is the way in which the city council's going to handle these, this is a waste of time and effort. If this is going to be the type of documents that the city's going to have as a representative of their, their minutes, these are, the only people that it seemed to be getting any type of notoriety in these darn things is somebody that's in favor of the city council, somebody that is actually, well, Harbor Resources Supervisor Miller, he's got pretty good many sentences in there. But anybody else that speaks before the city council gets one sentence and it's very vague and not really, not very descriptive whatsoever. So this, either do it right and say what is being said, or don't do it at all, and let's have a transcript. Find out what's going on. Thank you.
There is a transcript, Mr. Hildreth. It is a transcript. There is a full backup. If somebody wants to know who coughed, you can find out. And it's live video streaming, so we do what, we do our job. Okay, any other public comment?
I move action.
Good.
Second.
With Councilmember Ridgeway abstaining, the motion carries.
City clerk.
Motion for reconsideration.
No, no, we got, we got one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item number eight is Back Bay Science Center contract, approval of amendment number two to professional services agreement with Ron Yo.
Mr. Nichols pulled that?
Yeah, actually, I brought that up. And I, I'm having a little bit of problem with some of these back bay. We're spending three hundred, well, I think, three hundred thousand dollars of the, the fund that was found from the spill, the trader spill...
American trader.
American trader spill was used for this design. The problem I have with it is that we're spending a huge amount of money in the back bay, and we're still going to have two sedimentation basins there, and we're going to have to fight to have people knot fish out of the bay because you're not going to get clean fish out of that, yet we got to guarantee clean fish out of it. And I think we're ending up going to shoot ourselves in the foot. We're just, we're going to exhaust a lot of city money trying to be the lead agency back here, and, and we're basically not going to have something that we're happy with when we get done. We had, the, the boat works back there where the, the guys are doing their canoeing and so forth. They wanted to use the property next door that is well above tidallands, but all of a sudden, we're going to have to make it a mud flat again. Whatever happened to that? We don't, we're not getting consideration for any of the uses that, that are seemingly useful to us. And my question is, is to be a lead agency only to give money to something that isn't going to do us any good? And some of the other cleanup that we're talking about, putting a hundred thousand dollars into mitigation of the back bay when we're going to turn around and dredge the whole damn thing in a, in a little bit, this doesn't make sense. I just don't see this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Webb?
I believe that this item is not talking about dredging the bay or anything related to it.
This particular item is...
This particular item is, is about building a science center that will allow us to, to participate along with other agencies in trying to, to look at the science of how we can do a better job. And so I think this is a very worthwhile project, and I move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay. Staff, have any comment? Mr. Kiff, do you have any comment? All right, you don't. It's fine. Public comment? Seeing none? Let's bring it back for the vote.
With Councilmember Nichols voting no, the motion carries. Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none? Okay, we stand adjourned, is that right, till the twenty-seventh? Thank you.